Part of our meeting, this is Proclamations, we start 30 minutes prior to the business meeting. So first on our agenda is Fire Prevention Week. All you firefighters, come on up here. Come on, chief, get them up here. We'll read the proclamation with everybody up at the dais and then we'll give you time to speak, chief, or whoever you want to speak on your behalf. Come on up and face the crowd. City manager, whenever you're ready.
Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week. Whereas, the Palm Coast Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in the city of Palm Coast and visiting. And whereas, fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas, most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas, the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. And whereas, residents should follow three key calls to actions: Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas, lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas, the proper disposal of recycling of lithium ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risk in the home and community. And whereas, the Palm Coast Fire Department's firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas, the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home, serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of October 5th through the 11th, 2025, be officially designated as Fire Prevention Week. Signed, this 7th day of October, 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor Michael Norris.
Thank you, Mayor Norris, and City Council, and City Manager. We're so grateful for the support we have from our community for the mission of the Palm Coast Fire Department, which is to deliver the best service to our community every time. You're here with Engine 29, Engine 25, and then some members of both our junior firefighters and our public education team. So one of the things your firefighters will do this month is we'll talk to every student in every elementary school in Flagler County, every middle school in Flagler County, almost all of the daycares, teaching children how to stop, drop, and roll, how to have a plan with their parents, how to do some very basic fire safety things. This is a program that has definitely saved lives here in Flagler County where we had a fatal fire, but two young people were able to get out a little over 10 years ago. So this is a program that we really believe in, but your firefighters are out there all the time trying to do everything they can to protect our community, so I'm very grateful to them. This is a week where we ask our residents to take care, to ensure that they're taking great measures in their homes. As our technology has increased, our risk has changed a little bit, so this year's focus is on doing appropriate things with lithium ion batteries. We're actually participating in a new initiative in the United States Fire Service where we're just counting how we do things in a little more advanced way. Everyone in the country will be doing it by January, but we began about last week. So our firefighters are doing those kind of things, are participating in that, so that our citizens can continue to get the very best in protection. Thank you so much to our council for supporting us and for all of our citizens. There's a lot of great things happening in the Palm Coast Fire Department right now, so we're very grateful for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys, for being here. I really appreciate it.
We'll move on to our second proclamation, designating 6 through 10 October as Customer Service Week. Our customer service reps, come on up. Whoever's going to be accepting a proclamation, right here in the center. Both sides, so we can get a centered picture.
Proclamation, Customer Service Week. Whereas, businesses and government systems, both locally and across the nation, recognize that making a strong commitment to exemplary customer service builds trust and strengthens relationships with customers and clients. And whereas, businesses and governments that prioritize the understanding and anticipation of their customers' needs sets themselves apart by regularly exceeding customer expectations through dedication and professionalism. And whereas, the City of Palm Coast Customer Service Division continues to make a meaningful difference in the lives of its residents by upholding the highest standards of service every day, utilizing innovative solutions, and demonstrating unwavering care in their responses. And whereas, Palm Coast residents have come to rely on the friendly and personalized assistance of the city's customer service representatives who handle more than 130,000 inquiries annually, ensuring that citizens' needs are met with accuracy, friendliness, and respect. And whereas, over the past 20 years, the city of Palm Coast has earned a reputation for exceptional customer service, enhancing the quality of life for its residents and setting a benchmark for service excellence in municipal government. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the week of October 6, 2025, be officially designated as Customer Service Week. And we encourage all citizens to celebrate the exceptional work of customer service professionals who contribute to the success and well-being of this community by providing outstanding service every day. Signed, this 7th day of October, 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm Coast, Florida Mayor Michael Norris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for recognizing this week as Customer Service Week. You'll notice we have a lot more people here, a larger group today, because customer service is more than just one division. It's a commitment shared across every department. Each day, we strive to deliver exceptional service and put our residents first. Many of those here today serve in the community directly between the call center, taking anywhere from 100 to 120 calls a day, our field technicians completing anywhere from 20 to 60 work orders a day, assisting with anything from leaks to PEP alarms, or new service. We take pride in living our mission every day, and we'll continue working to serve our residents with excellence. We thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. I will say this about customer service. You know, most of the time in my career, I was not directly with customer service, but in my last job before I left the federal government, I had two passing ID offices on subbase Kings Bay. That's where everybody would go through to get access to the base. And unbelievable the frustration of trying to get onto a base where you had to have top secret access to deliver products. And I always told my people that worked for me, "You are the first impression this base gets of the base commander when they come in to get their ID to get on that installation." So I appreciate all y'all's hard work, and keep on doing what you're doing. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, we're moving on to the next one. Proclamation, October 11th, as NAACP Fierce Urgency of Now Day. If you could come up, if you're representing the NAACP for the city and county. Who's going to be accepting a proclamation? All right, get her right here in the middle.
Proclamation, NAACP, The Fierce Urgency of Now Day. Whereas, for more than a century, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, has worked to promote equality, remove barriers of prejudice, and create opportunities for justice and economic security. And whereas, the Flagler County branch of the NAACP established in 1986 has continued this mission with dedication and leadership, giving voice to the African-American community and strengthening the fabric of Palm Coast and Flagler County. And whereas, the 2025 Annual Freedom Fund Luncheon and Awards themed "The Fierce Urgency of Now" reminds us that advancing equity, justice, and democracy is a responsibility we all share. And whereas, this work includes supporting youth leadership, scholarships, and community programs that inspire and prepare the next generation to succeed, while also sustaining the important advocacy and education efforts of the NAACP. And whereas, Palm Coast is a diverse community that grows stronger when every voice is heard, every resident is valued, and we come together to protect rights, support one another, and build a brighter future. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that October 11th, 2025, be officially designated as NAACP, The Fierce Urgency of Now Day, and encourage all residents to join in supporting the mission of the NAACP, working together in unity to ensure justice, equality, and opportunity for all. Signed, this 7th day of October, 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, City Clerk, and City of Palm
Good evening, everyone. I'm Phyllis Pearson, and it's my honor to come out of education for the last 38 years, and now on to volunteer work for the last couple of years, which I'll be doing the rest of my life, with these wonderful folks that we get to interact and work with. I'd just like to thank all of those folks here who are sitting at the dais. The work literally goes through you, the pen, the focus. And I want to say that NAACP for our community is for everyone. It started with a voice and a pen, and most of the folks that started the NAACP didn't look like me. But thank you goodness that we can all work together, literally speaking, no matter what it appears to be, that we're working together for a common cause. And I'd like to say that the Freedom Fund occasion celebrates those in the community that have given, it's like decades of their lives, for the betterment of our Flagler County community. And that is what the NAACP stands for in all of the different venues and representations that we have here, from all of the industries, the faith-based, and everybody working together. Regardless of what it looks like on the outside, I can tell you that the work doesn't get done unless we come together and get it done. So I'd like to say that we stand, if you will, in the gap with all of those who are struggling in real time with trauma, with the challenge of trying to be educated and working towards their goals that interact with others. So please remember that the NAACP is working together with our Flagler County community and the surrounding areas to take all of your time and your donations and your work that you do, in your jobs and in your life with your family, to make sure that we're working for the betterment of empowering our Flagler County community, and we thank you for that opportunity and for this proclamation. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Phyllis. Okay, we have about 15 minutes left, so everybody just settle in place, get fired up for six o'clock. Thank you, Ms. Phyllis.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 7, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. We are in the John Netz Community Wing of City Hall. I'm calling this meeting to order. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a short moment of silence. And please, if you know about the tragic events that happened with Jorge Salinas this weekend, please say a prayer for him and his family if you feel the need to do so. He was a great guy, and he'll be lost. It's a terrible loss for our community to lose Jorge. So please stand with me.
Thank you. Ms. Cook, if you could, please call to roll.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll begin today's meeting with public participation. Please be aware of the rules of engagement. Item E in your agenda, and we'll slot 30 minutes for public participation. Please note defamatory comments. If the item is on the agenda, please refrain from that. When that item comes up, you will have time to speak. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, hi. Chantal Pruninger. I'd like to have some explanation for that. How you can't park on your own grass unless it's called swale? It's not because the city says they own the swell because we still have to mow that space. And why is it okay to park on the swales from 6:00 to 11:00, but not the rest of the time, not 24/7? So what's the logic behind that? Because it's perceived as city control, that's what it is was. And also, what has the city done to remove the fluoride from the city drinking water that was effective July 1st? And I'd like to bring the issue of the grants. If the city already has so much borrowed money still to be paid back, what is the city doing by giving away grants to group if the city itself does not even have it available? That's more for the citizen to pay back. And can you please let those organizations handle their own budgets? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Dennis Sacola, F-section, resident homeowner for 14 years. I've been here five times complaining about short-term rentals, but instead, I think I can help the situation. When you wrote this code, you had two items that are part of the problem. The first part of the problem is that you have 10-person occupancy. I went in 100-mile radius, and every city in 100-mile radius, I could not find one that has 10-person occupancy. Even Orlando is six people, because 10 people equals a party. You get 10 people, 20 bucks each, you got a pool, heated pool, house, and disrupts me. Fifteen times, I've called the police since the end of March, ruining my life. I've been living there for 14 years and never had one problem. And the other problem is, when you wrote the code, the ordinance, there's no penalties for failure to go by the code and the rules. There's no penalty. You have no penalty written in there. Okay? Now, that's wrong. Now, the other thing is, I want to express is that some people like myself moved here because of the standards created by the codes and ordinances. And now, I'm watching them go the way of the wind. And what is this for, the police? 2% of the population don't want chickens? And parked ratty pickup trucks with signs all over them and make noise all night, barking on their trucks? No. Okay? If you want to see the result of what taking ordinances away are, I'll give you two good examples, and write these addresses down. I want you to see these houses. 43 Fort Caroline Lane and 73 Fountain Gate. Okay? And then the third thing I want to talk about is the charter. Page 45, Section 11, Chapter 2, Schedule for Charter, reviewed no sooner than 10 years after December 31, 1999, and every 10 years thereafter. So you know what that means. That's all I got to say. Thank you. And Barbara Grossman has been wonderful. She's been on the case, but 10 people is not doing it. It's not cutting it at all. Because in the 15 times, there was 10 people there, because their pool and my pool are butting up against each other. And the house was built during our mayor Alvin, one of his cronies, that built it three feet higher than all houses around it. So I could see 10 people screaming and yelling, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning. But Barbara's taken care of it. But every time they have more than 10 people or more, that's when the problem starts. You have to change it to 6, because this is party town otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mayor Kirk Whittington. I want to ask you to accept and convey my compliments to your acting city manager. I was here last month during the morning meeting. The presentation she made was very articulate, very clear to understand. She showed us what our tax dollars are being spent on and what the city's priorities are going forward. I gained a lot of information from that, so if you please accept on her behalf, I'd appreciate it. If you'd also contact the consultant you have with the sitting group. She had a very, very good presentation where she basically said, here's what the city wanted, here's what the city got, here's what the city got but the governor vetoed, and then she showed what you're going to be doing in the next year going forward. I found those are just an excellent presentation. And as Councilman Miller pointed out, I believe I'm remembering this correctly, that Palm Coast, Flag Creek County, got almost 10% of the total state allocation for this year. That's outstanding. That's almost unheard of. Like you mentioned, that would be like Miami, Daytona, Orlando, Tampa. And we got a huge share. That shows that the state knows that this is a great and thriving community. Mayor, if you would accept my compliments along with your city attorney, if you remember last time when I was up here, there was a woman in front of me that made a terroristic threat against your vice mayor. You were very clear in your body language. You told me to stop. I thought at first you're talking to me. But then the city attorney sat forward immediately, grabbed his microphone, and accurately told the woman that that was simply unacceptable. Making a terroristic threat is illegal, especially not to make one on a recording. That's stupid. Vice Mayor, my compliments to you. You did not react to it. You sat there very calmly and listened to her. What she said to you was completely wrong, and I differ with that. Councilman Sullivan, I bring you an invitation from Tim at Chick-fil-A. Tim is a 30-year man for the Navy. He served from 1986 to 2016. He was a senior chief on what he called a very large supply ship. I talk to him frequently, I eat at Chick-fil-A far too often, but I mentioned to him, one of our council members is also U.S. Navy, and I said, I'll ask him to come by and talk to you sometime. Tim said, you do that. I'll talk to Nina, your man, anytime. See, you've been asked. I wouldn't go there at noon. You'll not find a parking spot, but if you go there early or late, you should be fine. On Chick-fil-A, they're going to be opening the new location. The grand opening is going to be the 11th of November, according to Tim, today. That's if Florida Power and Light gets some power by then. It should. A challenge for all of you, and I don't have anybody behind me, I have already written Chick-fil-A. I wrote a letter to the CEO and the president inviting them to come down here for the grand opening. I extolled the virtues of Palm Coast. I don't know if they will or not, but they might be willing to do so. For instance, Mayor, you write the CEO, that's Andrew Cathy, he's the grandson of Truitt. And Vice Mayor, maybe you can write the president, her name is Susanna Foster, inviting him to come down here. I also took the liberty of inviting the governor. I've written him twice, didn't expect a response. I love his executive assistant. Give me a few more seconds. His executive assistant's name is Mona Lissa Young. M-O-N-A-L-I-S-S-A. Thought that's a great first name. And I just put it to the governor. I said, listen, the odds of you being able to make this are between slim and none, but if you can, you know the great things about Palm Coast. And I encouraged him to also reach out to Chick-fil-A and for Chick-fil-A to reach out to the governor. I've always learned, in my letter to him, I said, the odds are slim, but I've always been raised with the idea that you don't know unless you ask. So I'm asking. So if you two maybe would put out the word to Chick-fil-A Corporate and maybe council members, you could put out the word to the governor and just say, we'd really appreciate you coming here, and your staff would love it. It's extremely unusual for a community of our size to have two Chick-fil-A franchises. I don't know if you knew that.
All right, sir. Your time's expired.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead and contact them, see what they say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Lang, R-section. So basically, I'm not coming to complain about anything. I'm actually coming to, why are you laughing over there? Coming to thank you. So we recently just had our last Palm Coast Connect event for the year, and it was the third one for this year. You know, we've had some growing pains, but we've had a very successful event this year. You know, a lot of work has been put in by the Alumni Academy. Ed Fuller, our fearless leader, Nina, who's here in the audience. We put a lot of free work, as you will, to welcome new and existing members of Palm Coast and show them what's happening here and getting to know staff and different organizations that we have here. We basically, we're bringing everybody together, and that was the goal. It was the welcome wagon aspect, but bringing them to us instead of going door-knocking and saying, hey, welcome to Palm Coast. Mayor, we appreciate you. I think you've been to all three of them this year. You actually showed up, and that's great. We really appreciate that. We would, if you haven't been to one of our events, we're going to be doing two next year. We had some growing pains. We figured two was going to be enough, one in the beginning of the year, one toward the end of the year. But we get a lot of great feedback. The surveys that we get are amazing. We really want to thank you guys for supporting us in doing this. You know, we really feel good about doing it and really kind of getting the word out about Palm Coast Connect, about all the services that we offer, about all the charities that we have. It's just an amazing event that we have here, and we really want to thank you. We want to thank the staff, because we know the staff comes out and has tables out there, and they're answering questions, and we know it's after hours. But they, you know, I feel like they enjoy it too, because they get to talk to the community like they really wouldn't talk to the community normally. And they get to ask those questions one-on-one. They're not on a phone call. They actually get to talk to somebody, a human being. So again, I want to thank you guys for your support. Hopefully, we can continue this. This was our first year. We had growing pains, but it was successful, and we really appreciate the support that you guys gave us, support from the staff, city manager. Brittany, Brittany was amazing. She organizes our meetings so we can meet here, and we meet every Monday and all these things. So we really want to thank everybody that was involved, and it's a great event, and hopefully, more people will keep coming out, and new members and new members of the community will come and join us and learn more about the community and how to connect with different organizations here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Jeanne Duarte. Last year, our budget was about $350 million, and we thought that was high. You recently approved a $696 million budget, so let that sink in. Palm Coast has quickly become a city where people are trying to leave. From touchdown, touchdown, from touch and goes at the flight training, 5G cell towers, a data center, flooding issues, insurance rates, congested roads, and so on, to our water utilities turning to toilets to tap, all which are great health risks. We can buy incinerator toilets and capture incoming water in buckets so nothing goes down our drains, and we will still be charged sewer wastewater base and usage rates for water coming in and that same water going out. There is no sewer meter, so you're really not able to calculate that properly. And now you're adding a domestic reclaim rate and usage fee based on irrigation and potable meters, whether you use them or not. Did you know chromium 6 and arsenic show up in our water and both disappeared recently off of our records? I pulled a 20-year water quality records report, not just the report, but all the records, and created a report. Chromium 6 was recently, as early as 2023, was up to 23 times the health guidelines. HAA 9 is 238 times, HAA 5 is 130 or 23 times. Did you know the EPA is in hot water with multiple lawsuits? They haven't set a federal safety level, just a legal one. Now you know.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Regine Burnier, resident of Palm Coast. I know you all have a great challenge ahead to improve this city, to be a better place for everyone to live in, young as well as senior. Try to get a manager to balance the load and clarity among you with meeting and workshop to have a smarter decision and efficiency. Let's make us aware that you all are working together as team player. It's very important for us to know that. Number one, a lot of people still complain about the heavy traffic on the road. Vehicles should take priority over golf carts and people walking with their dog on the street. For safety as well as accident, people should walk on the grass or sidewalk. Let's be considerate toward each other on the road at all time. The winter is upon us, and it will be more apparent that the traffic will increase. Number two, let's open on Sundays for swimming since we only have one public swimming pool for this city. Number three, let's improve Old Kings Road as soon as possible, especially where the businesses are. It would release a lot of congestion in these areas on the road. Since the mayor is our leader with excellent background, let's give him and vice mayor the respect with their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
George Mayo, Palm Coast. I'm here to talk about Belter Boulevard and tractor-trailers using that truck, that street as a cut-through street going north to south between 100 and US-1. I live off down in the Z's, so just in the past week, me going home, I'm not sitting there waiting for trucks. I've seen a tank truck with placards, which means it's carrying caustic chemical or flammable material. I've seen a tank truck carrying grain. There's no reason there's a grain truck over there. A flatbed truck with empty pallets chained down. He was going south, means he was empty and going home. We want to protect our infrastructure. Belter Boulevard was paved just a couple years ago. It's still in good shape, but these trucks are using it as cut-through. Years ago, when I came, there was a "no-through truck streets" signs on the road, both north and south. Commerce Parkway has just opened up in Bonnell, which is going through commercial. If we address that and get the truckers to use that instead of going through Belter Boulevard, it will save our roads. We're always talking about, we have to pave, we have to pave. We'll put a "no-through truck" signs there. Also, the couple companies that are here carrying stumps when they're clearing lots for building, they're going up and down that every day, all day, to take the stumps down to US-1 and I believe it's County Road 202 or 204 where they dump all that stuff. They're abusing the roads, and we want to save our roads. Try and stop that, please. Also, I had an appointment the other day going up to Palm Coast Parkway, and I was going by Imagine School. I brought this up with previous mayor before that, and previous mayor before that, and previous councils, and previous city managers. Well, traffic came to a stop. There were about eight cars in front of me stopped, everybody with their four-way flashes on because they want to go pick up their little kids from Imagine School. And it was that way coming southbound also, eight to 10 cars. Well, this time, there were two police cars there, had people pulled over who were driving on the wrong side of the road because they can't wait 20 minutes to get through while these people are just waiting for their kids. I brought this up before. Previous city managers have always said, we'll talk to the school and get it solved. There was a tractor trailer, not this time, time before, that ran on the wrong side of the road. There's going to be an accident there. They have a long driveway. They have a driveway that goes around the back and to the left. I can't see any reason that something can't be worked out with the school because there's going to be an accident. Somebody's going to drive on the wrong side of the road, you're going to have a head-on, and you're going to say, oh, we never knew this. You're going to have a head-on and you're going to say, "Oh, we never knew this." Well, it's there. And I wish, you know, people can't always wait for everybody, you know, mothers and fathers come to pick their kids up a half hour early, put their four-way flashes on and block the road. So, thank you. I hope you look into that and can do something about both things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
How you doing? Buliérrez Navy, US Navy, okay? Buliérrez in Palm Coast over 20, 26 years. First, I would like to thank the elected members for taking time to listen to my opinion, okay? Again, my name is Buliérrez, living in Palm Coast, 26 years, okay? My topic today is respect and unity. Presently, we have a horrible situation before us as we speak. Respect, that word has been eradicated from our English language. Presently, we have, before us, we have a mayor and a vice mayor whom have given all the respect as required. Your mayor has worn the military uniform to protect this country. Our vice mayor has held his government body together even with all the negative innuendos in the newspaper. Thank you very much, okay? There is a person by the name of Abraham Lincoln who made a speech June 16th, 1858, quote, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." What does this mean? I don't know. You tell me, okay? This applies to this country, to the state, to Flagler, and the household. The more we disagree, the less we accomplish. We must first come to a consensus in which we can express our views with clarity and most importantly, with respect to each other. We are not perfect, yes, and we will make mistakes. When you make a mistake, you learn. We need to unite, respect each other, so we can proceed further in this world. Unity is the name of the game. I would really appreciate sometime all of you presently will get together and shake hands at Carrabas. It's on me. I'll pay, I'll pay my food stamps. Not a big deal. But you're going to walk out with a picture shaking hands as unity, by the way. And lastly, you'll frame this picture in your main office. Lastly, the pool is a total fiasco. That's for another day. The YMCA in Ormond Beach, guess what? They don't have seven lanes. They have 25 lanes. You're talking about people who know what they're doing, okay? God bless. Thank you very much for all your hard work. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Kounis.
Good evening. Gary Kounis, C-section. You all are supposed to be working for us and you pass an impact fee raise and right away the builders are going to sue us. They only pass that on to the customers buying the houses. I knew Bob and Jane Toll personally, the original parasites and builders. They've changed the whole definition of parasite, those two. You're supposed to be working together. There are four of you seem to vote against Mayor Norris. Mayor Norris was put there by us to start to change things and make things better for us, and it's not being done. We have one individual that's running for Congress at the rec center and we all paid taxes for him to be there. He should pay that himself, not us, okay? We had people come up from Palm Beach, Fort Lauderdale complaining that it was costing them too much money to replace the sand at their properties in Flagler. We originally knew the problems, they knew this threats, and they were originally told and written that they would be paying for their own resources to keep the sand around their property and our property's rights. They go to Flagler County and say, "Oh, we have this problem. It's costing us too much." What happens? Oh, well, we can raise the half percent sales tax so everybody pays for it. We all shouldn't be paying for their sand, you know? That's not right. And if that's done, we will have no money for anything else from the sales tax. So that half a percent should not be included. Those people down there should pay for their own sand, not us, all right? We need to get together and get things squared away. Our roads are in deplorable shape. I understand some of them are being taken care of from Teresa. That's fine. But it doesn't seem to be going fast enough and a lot of the areas, the roads are really starting to crumble and they need to be repaired. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast.
What'd you do, sneak in? I didn't see you in there.
Navy, we do that a lot. So I want to take a moment to bring to your attention, and I'm happy to see that we have one of the county commissioners here, an update on the status of our Palm Coast Public Library. Now, I applauded all of you, and I've been in contact with some of you, about bringing up the concerns with the commissioners at an earlier group session. And in that time, the commissioners explained and said, and they made a promise, I believe, to one of the council members up there, that no program would be affected. But on the library wall right now is a sign. And on that sign, it shows the Bonnell Library is closing the end of the month. The Palm Coast Library is effectively reducing their hours one November with a loss of approximately nine hours a week. The new library is projected to not open until sometime in December. So we in Palm Coast are going to be experiencing a nine-hour-a-week loss of an amenity, a library that is used probably larger than any other service in this city. Now, I know that you guys tried. You offered compensation. You tried to get the council, the commissioners to realize, and you did the right thing by bringing it up. All of that was lost. The county just wrote off $10 million of ambulance fees, but we can't keep our library open to service the young people and the old people that use it constantly. So I would ask you, it was a commitment that there would be a revisit months down with document, with data to show the effectiveness and the loss. Well, we're already going to experience nine hours a week for almost six weeks, probably. Nobody will tell me when the nexus is going to open. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know that the citizens of Palm Coast are losing services right in front of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the city manager. You got any follow-ups?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I can ask staff to get with Ms. Chantel regarding her concerns about swale parking. Mr. Zobler can answer that question for you. It's actually written in our code that way. And city council, we can review that when time comes when we're reviewing the LDC. As far as the short-term rentals, city council, you recall, I sent you an email about those being on the code board's agenda for October and November, those that were in violation, which would be, we had it, no, I think it was, it was, the next one would be in November. Is it tomorrow, Marcus?
So the code enforcement had an extra board meeting this month. So they had one last week and they'll have one next week as well for short-term rentals specifically.
Thank you, Marcus. And then as far, thank you, Mr. Kurt, for the compliments and as well as Mr. Eddie Lang about the Connecting Palm Coast Expo. We agree. It's a great collaborative event that welcomes residents and then gives residents who've been here maybe a long time some information about the city and city services and those nonprofit groups that we have. I would also encourage Ms. Duarte to get with Mr. Peter Rousell of any questions regarding the water quality report. He has 30 years plus of experience and understands every single chemical that you just mentioned, so he is your subject matter expert on that. And then we are, we have in your strategic action plan, mayor and city council, the concerns about our roads, the traffic, as well as the resurfacing of any of our roads. And in the budget this year is actually conducting a full analysis of the roads to see the PCI for where they have been, and we do have data that predate, so we can track that data. Mr. Mayo, I will look into your concerns about Belter Boulevard. I'll specifically talk to Commander Woodward about that because I know the sheriff's office has several cameras that try to correlate the vehicles so that they're not on local roads and they have gone through waste stations and all of that. But Commander Woodward and I will work together on that. And mayor and city council staff is actively working on the concerns at Imagine School. If you recall, we've got the Old Kings Road, Royal Palms Improvement Design out for short-term solutions and then the longer-term solution and the concerns at Imagine School is included in that. It'll also come down to any type of budgetary analysis for what's inside the Transportation Impact Fee Fund, once we get those design improvements back, but that is a work in progress. And Mr. Webb, I will follow up with the county on the concerns about the library. Mayor, that's all I had.
Thank you. Marcus, how many cases do we have as far as short-term rentals? Do you have it off the top of your head, a rough estimate?
I believe the, at least the latest that they're going to have at this next hearing is going to be 13.
13, all right. So we may have to revisit that.
Is the, do we know if the neighbor of Mr. Sikola is, has received any violations or anything like that?
I can't speak, but I know Ms. Grossman has been looking into it.
Okay. I'll follow up on that.
Anything else from the council?
I got a couple, Mr. Mayor. So Chantel for the fluoride, we don't, we never added any in, so we don't have to pull it out. So we were never giving or putting that in the water. The only, to my understanding, the only, the only amount that exists is basically the natural amount that's in any drinking water that comes from the ground. So there's, there's like a trace amount of it, but it's very, 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 very small. In terms of the short-term rentals for Mr. Sikola, I believe we had a higher, initially a higher cap, right, for the amount of people. And we brought it down and there was a number of people that were fighting to not have that cap at all because they had six-bedroom rooms and things like that. And they wanted to be able to have, you know, a couple in each room. And we capped it at that because, for the same reasons, that we did not want to have 18 people at a residence having a party. But we also didn't want to penalize somebody that maybe had four or five bedrooms that could comfortably sleep those. Mr. Lang, thank you, and thanks to everybody that participates in the Palm Coast Connect. It's a great event, allows for people to get a lot of information about our city. So if you haven't been, please come to the next one that's available. And then Old Kings Road, we have that on our priorities for both legislative asks as well as the TPO Board, which I'm on, trying to push that and make sure it's a top priority to try to get some F dollars allocated and get going on that so that we can also do Phase Two and Three on the north side as well. And then Imagine, city manager, I thought there was an ask for Imagine itself to come up with some mitigation on that, not just us trying to plan the roads around it, but also they contributing in a way that's going to reduce that.
Yes, and they have, city council, they have made improvements within their own facility to allow for more cars to stack up in their parking lot. So they have, they have worked with our team to make some accommodations.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just really quickly, so I'll start with the Imagine School. That's been something that I've been constantly following up on, looking forward to hopefully very soon, acting city manager, the traffic improvements and the intersection in conjunction with the Imagine School. Do we know when we can expect an update?
We, the study of getting the traffic counts, I wanted to be done during school time, so that was being done during September. So the consultant has that report and we should get something either this month or next month.
Okay. We've been, I think, pretty gracious with Imagine School. They need to, we need to see some action here from them. I mean, this has been a, to the, to the, Mr. Mayo's point, I think it was you that brought this up. To your point, you've spoken to a lot of officials and a lot of city managers, so have I. So, yeah, I think we need to kind of light some fire there.
And I got a question because this, it's not just Imagine. Imagine just happens to be on a very, a bottleneck, so to speak, right? You know, my kids go to Belter. Cars are parked out into the turn lane with their blinkers on two hours before school's over. You know, I don't know if there's any way to say, "Hey, if you're not inside the school property, you can't be parked in a thoroughfare blocking the road," because it's happening at all the schools, everywhere. And it's to the point where, you know, there's, there's 50, 60 cars in a roadway. And so I don't know if there's any way to regulate that.
I did speak with Ms. Moore, the superintendent, and we discussed that challenge and that I don't know what the parents do that they can get there so early, but, you know, they've sent out countless messages to parents, each individual school has. They've talked about various safety things. The sheriff has worked, sheriff's office has worked really hard on, you know, not just Imagine, but to your point, Councilman Miller, Belter, Old Kings, Wadsworth, all of those. It's...
I just, to me, you know, whether it's in Florida, I'd hate to, you know, have tickets written and stuff like that for people picking up their kids, but...
Well, and when the tickets are...
Parking in the road...
It's a safety issue.
You know, that's, it's not legal.
Well, when the tickets...
Can't do it at other businesses.
Are written, the judge is throwing them out.
Right.
So it's, it's...
Creating paperwork for our law enforcement that's not...
Yeah, and I mean, we don't want to, but if enforcement is the only way to change behavior, I just, I don't know, because it's becoming a problem at all the schools.
The more people move here, the worse it's going to get because our kids went through, all the way through. Christian was the first class from Belter all the way through Metansus. And over the years, it has got progressively worse. Further down Belter, further down Belter at the south end, little Betty Taylor and Wadsworth, so.
I mean...
But Imagine is our main concern right now. They need to do something.
Yeah, because that's completely blocking the road.
Completely, yeah.
It's not a two-lane road like the other two roads.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, really quickly, mayor. So the STR, just to clarify the ordinance, it's actually, it's not, 10 isn't the maximum for every single STR. It's the number of bedrooms plus two more people. So if you have a two-bedroom STR, your max is capped at six. It's not 10 for every single short-term rental. Even if you have a five-bedroom home, it's still also capped at 10. So it's up to 10 depending on the number of bedrooms in your house. So just a clarification on that. And we, yeah, to your point, Councilman Miller, we got a lot of pushback from a lot of the short-term rental owners saying, "You can't put any restrictions, any caps." We chose to go with 10 because we thought that was the reasonable course to take. I do want to thank Eddie Lang and everybody who contributes to Palm Coast Connect, volunteers and staff. I hear over and over how great of an event that is. And then finally, well, no, there's two more, sorry. Mr. Kounis, I'm going to send you the list of roads that we have micro-surfaced and the roads that we are planning on micro-surfacing. That's what you were alluding to, so I'll get that to you. And then I would like, I'm going to send an email to staff on the Belter issue that Mr. Mayo brought up. I don't know what can be done to preserve, I don't want to restrict it just to an inquiry into Belter, but what can be done to maybe force trucks to take certain routes so that we can preserve our roads? We know it's getting more and more expensive to mill and pave and we're getting less and less in the gas tax every year. So we've got to figure out, you know, how we balance those things and maybe some type of regulation is the way to do that. I don't know. I've never thought about it that way before, but if we can maybe have staff kind of toss around that idea and look into it.
To that point, it was mentioned that there used to be signs where "No Through Trucks." Was that, was that an ordinance or...
It's currently at Florida Park Drive, so Marcus and I can look at the ordinance that we have in place for Florida Park Drive and then look to maybe expand.
That would be great.
We also see a lot of that, I recall, anecdotally frontier, the crossroads that come from Florida Park to Old Kings and those neighborhoods in the F section. You get a lot of trucks because it shaves, you know, six minutes off their, their trip around, but there's no sidewalks on those roads. There's, you know, bus stops, things like that, so there's kids walking in the street. It's not safe with large dump trucks and things like that flying through there.
Thank you, mayor.
That's all. Councilman Gabe Barrow, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Now, just on the, on the, the traffic, you know, at Imagine and the different schools, you know, Wolfery and the rest of the school board, you know, have the ability to affect that and hopefully that they can find a way to listen to the... have the ability to affect that, and hopefully they can find a way to listen to the concerns of our residents and, and fix that. And I say that as a former member of the, of the Flagler County School Board. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilman Sullivan?
Just, just quickly agreeing, I mean, I go by Old Kings, you know, school, and the same thing. I mean, I know we told, well, it's just the beginning of the year. No, it's not just the beginning of the year. And that's dangerous there. That's a high, high-traffic road again, and there is some room there, but the cars are in the middle of the street or the side of the street and restricted flow. On vacation rentals, I agree with everything you said. I wasn't here when you, we did the city ordinance on that, but I was there when we did the county. And there was some grandfathering there, and numbers are dependent on size. They built some McMansions over there that made it very hard. But I will say this, that I'm glad we have our ordinance in effect because the legislature has not given up on essentially taking all of those restrictions away from us. So, you know, I'm glad we have what we have in effect. And finally, on the library, I believe there's supposed to be a study done here shortly on the library hours to see if they can put the hours back. I don't think they've restricted anything quite yet, but I heard December is, is the key, the key date when they open up the new Nexus Library in, in the south. So I believe there is already on the books when our joint meetings occurred, where they've agreed to do a study on that with the intent of not restricting the hours, but we'll see.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Webb's referring to is that the closing down kind of prior to when we expected and before the Nexus opened, so.
I mean, I, we're talking very small numbers there. We're already in October, and December is the new library's opening, so.
Yeah.
I think a decision's supposed to be made.
That's a matter for the school board and the county. Marcus, you don't have anything? Okay, we got, we got, we're going to move on to minutes. We have minutes to approve from the September 16th business meeting to September 23rd workshop and the September 24th budget meeting. Can we get a motion, does anyone have any objections to any of the meetings or corrections?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second. We got a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? You good, Ms. Cook?
The motion passes unanimously.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to Item G, ordinance of the second read, ordinance 25, 2025, amending Chapter 42, creating Section 42-7 of the Code of Ordinance Providing for the Use of and Operating of Bicycles and Electronic Ford-Powered Cycles. Goodness gracious. Okay, what you got, Marcus?
Uh, no presentation for tonight, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Just as drafted, as directed as at our previous meeting. I'm here for questions, comments, directions, any changes you'd like to make to the ordinance tonight if you choose to vote to approve it.
Okay, and we, you got the, we, I mentioned to you about the corrections for Mr. Dance, and you got all the typos squared away.
I will, if that's City Council, yes, I will make sure those are up today.
The couple of typos that were in there, and the age is a primary concern.
I think that was the only thing we were really kind of going back and forth on.
Yeah.
So just really quickly, to clarify your point, Mayor, are you talking about the typos that we discussed last time or the new typos that Commissioner Dance emailed?
Mr. Dance found one, at least one I saw about-
Okay. I wanted to be, I wanted to make sure we're very clear on the record about that. Okay, so, I mean, yes, we would have to motion for that, but I would agree that those typos need to be fixed in the ordinance. I, I do want to still talk about the age, but there's a few things in the redline version that I had some questions about. Number one, when we're talking about the class of e-bikes, and I know that this seems to be pretty standard, but I'm, I'm just still confused as to why these classes don't cover a throttle assisted with a max speed of 28 miles per hour.
It's a fair question, ma'am, and that's something I can easily add. And as C, they include also a throttle for that.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be a minor change, so that wouldn't affect the ordinance or anything like that.
That would be added to the Class 3?
Yeah, so she, the Vice Mayor is talking about Paragraph 7C, Class 3, e-bikes are pedal-assisted only with no throttle. She's asking that there be a throttle also included in there. So it'd be no throttle and throttle.
Or, yeah.
Or, yes.
Because right now, we have pedal-assisted with a max speed of 20 miles per hour, and then throttle-assisted with max speed of 20 miles per hour, and then we have pedal-assisted max speed of 28 miles per hour, but it doesn't seem there's a throttle-assisted with a max speed of 28 miles per hour. And then, yeah, so we were given, I think Council was all given a list of the accidents since December of 2023 involving e-bikes. The average age of those accidents was 30. So when we're looking at the age minimum requirements, now, I'll be candid, I also see on here, we've got 1, 2, 3, 4 accidents since 2023 involving 13-year-olds. So I see, you know, the prevalence of teenagers obviously riding these around our community, and they've obviously gotten into accidents. But if the purpose of this ordinance is to affect safety, when the average age of people getting into accidents is age 30, why are we, I think, overstepping into the purview of what a, the decision a parent should make as to whether or not they're going to allow their child to ride an e-bike and putting a minimum age on this? I will also point out that the state of Florida entertained putting an age requirement on e-bikes, and they did not do that. Rather, they said if you're under the age of 16, you have to wear a helmet. So, you know, I hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater on the ordinance, but I just can't support what I think is government overstep into the purview of parenting by telling a parent they can or cannot put their child on a certain type of bike, particularly when a regular bike can be ridden in an unsafe manner as well. Because what we're really talking about here is, any, where do you, where do you stop it, right? So then if we go to look at scooters, kids zip around on those scooters, too. Are we going to tell parents that if their kid is younger than age 11, they can't ride a scooter? I just think this is not appropriate. I think if the state of Florida comes up with enough data, there are reasons why there are age restrictions on certain things in our laws. And it's based on a lot of data, it's based on a lot of science, there's other things that go into it. For the city to impose an age restriction, I think is just government overstep. So again, I, I hope Council reconsider the age requirement. Everything else in the ordinance, I, I think it looks great.
That, those numbers, that's a small sample. I think that's a bit skewed.
I think also that the sample represents a multimodal distribution. So you have everything kind of grouped around younger kids and grouped around retirees in terms of the ages here.
What do you mean by that?
So instead of a normal distribution where you, you see like one specific grouping that is, is more responsible for these accidents than another, you're seeing two. So you're seeing kind of retirees, which I think is probably reflective of usage, right? Retirees are probably more likely to use these as a means of getting around, as well as young people. Your middle-aged people are using vehicles, cars. So that's why I think you see kind of an average of 30, but the, the, most of these accidents are occurring for young people and older people, not 30-year-olds.
Yeah, like I said, it's askew, it's askew.
Because of it's, it's an average.
Yeah, it's a sample.
Yeah, so I mean, Commissioner Dance sent us the CDC page about bicycle safety, and one of the things it said was adults ages 55 to 69 have the highest bicycle death rate. Adolescents ages 10 to 14 have the highest rate of bicycle-related injuries. But male bicyclists have death rates seven times higher and injury rates four times higher than females. So would we tell our residents, if you have a son, he can't ride an e-bike, but girls can? I just, I, listen, it's just my position. I get it, you all probably don't agree, but I'm putting my position on the record. I don't think we need to be telling parents that if their kids are a certain age, they can't ride an e-bike.
I'm, I'm not advocating for that. I think I was more leaning on not having the, the age group or the age requirements from the beginning. You know, it's just where do we want to be in terms of safety, you know?
Girls are naturally more responsible than boys.
Right. The, the pre, prefrontal cortex.
They mature a little bit.
The consequence, being able to understand consequence.
So we got 11 in here, and if we have to revisit it, we have to revisit it. But it's something, but if we get something, the same way with Airbnbs, we get something on the books, and if we have to in time have to revisit it, but I have no problem with 11. I thought it should be 13 because, like I said, when I was-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, move approval of the ordinance with the recommendations made by Commissioner Dance.
Oh, can you, let's, let Commissioner, Councilman Sullivan make his comments first, Councilman.
The only comment I have, it's a general comment, and it, it's this, that like it or not, once this ordinance is in effect, whatever enforcement happens will have to be done one way or another by the, by our police force primarily. I'd like to see some kind of a sign-off on the part of the police department before we approve this, so that we don't have to come back with the police department might in the future say, I never agreed to that, that kind of thing. So I'd like to have, I've, I know that they've basically said we're in agreement on this, but I'd like to have some kind of initial off on the part of the police department before we put this into effect.
So I will, I will add, every time we make corrections, I send it over to the Sheriff's Office to get their feedback. And every time they are saying, good to go, we, we have no additional edits, we support this.
Okay, they support it. Okay.
Well, that, that, that's not my point.
Yeah. Okay, let's say it. Commander Woodward, have you had any feedback from the Sheriff's Department on any of this?
Mr. Duffy, I've been in our council, I've been working together on this. I, we will support it. We started the process of getting this control.
They pretty, they pretty much wrote it.
Yeah, I think, I think-
I know. I just want to make sure that, in the future.
We'll hear about it if they don't support.
Well, I, that's fine, that's fine, Mayor. I'll make my point.
To the conversation about edits in the future as well, I know the TPO is specifically doing some workshopping right now to try to have a coordinated regional plan for e-bikes and ordinances. So I'll try to bring that information back as well so that we can be consistent across the region in terms of what everybody else is doing.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilman Gambero, you can make your motion now, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I move that we approve this ordinance with the, the recommendations made by Commissioner Dance.
And I'm guessing Ms. Pontieri's recommending edit as well?
Yes.
Well, I'm not going to second the motion because I don't agree with the age, but-
Yeah, I'm just making sure he got all the-
Including your, your Class 3 throttle.
With the, with the, with the edits made by the Vice Mayor.
Do we have a second? We got a second from Councilman Sullivan. Any more comments from the council? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. Come on up, Commissioner Dance. I know you've got something to say. Yes, sir. Is that your bike out front? You rode it?
And his helmet.
That's right. I didn't bring it up this time, my apologies. I'm, I'm really, I mean, I appreciate that you guys are seriously considering some of my edits. I'm not, this is not my intent to be a sixth councilman up here, just as a resident and a, somebody who puts thousands of miles on their e-bike a year. There are some distinct differences in, in the two, so I just want to make sure that all the changes with the motion are, are acknowledged. There was inclusion of pedestrian speed within school zones on the sidewalk, which I think was an omission from the first one, but I added that because there are, and I have witnessed, you know, bicyclists going too fast in the school zones because you have parents, you have kids walking to school, and I think it's important to go, reduce those speeds down to pedestrian speed during school flashing times and at crosswalks. I think we, there's, there's instances of crosswalks. People slowing down at crosswalks are able to communicate with their eyes better and, and be able to see approaching vehicles. So that was a distinct difference. I only included the age stuff to give you some, some background and, and research some of the data which you did. I think there, the, the changes are, are responsible. Thank Mr. Duffy for the changes that have been proceeded to this point. I think, right, that first and foremost, we're trying to protect pedestrians, but also acknowledge that e-bikes are a growing trend, especially within our senior community, and they are not getting on roads. They are not comfortable, they're not safe getting in, on roads or on bike lanes. And if we can come up, and I think this is coming to a, an area where we can all safely utilize the same facility. To Vice Mayor Pontieri's discussion about regular bikes, and I mentioned this last time, e-bikes are distinctly different from regular bikes. They are heavy. They are anywhere from 50 to 70 to 80 pounds. They can't stop as quickly, and they hit things at it with different force. So if you are a pedestrian or you're going to feel the impact differently. So that's where the age is important. Are, are younger children able to handle the weight of the vehicle, of the bike, and, and the force and the speed, being able to coordinate all that. And I think the most important thing is the safety components that we've incorporated, which can be enforced through the Sheriff's Department, which is being safe and following all those other guidelines. So those were the important parts and the differences. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Chantal Pranega, I think there's not enough background, background in the safety of e-bikes because it's still pretty new. So in, in a few years, you'll have much more e-bikes on the streets or even on the path. But I'm surprised to hear about overreach on e-bike cycling age, but not overreach on the swale or grass parking. I just had to say it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Mr. Webb.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast, I applaud you for trying to fix a problem, though I'm not sure exactly what the problem is. And I fully expect the state is going to mandate an ordinance that we're all going to have to follow anyway. My concern is my cost to support the Sheriff's Department, to support this ordinance over the time. I thought that Councilman Sullivan was going to go in a direction of slowing things down and asking for an evaluation or the cost impact through the Sheriff's Department to support, per the penalties mandated in this ordinance and the enforcement of this ordinance, to determine, are we going to be sitting here in April, May next year and listen to the Flagler County Sheriff's Department go, well, supporting that ordinance cost us another million dollars to go out and track down these kids and write tickets and do all the administration with it to see that we didn't get any impact or, or safe? I know that there's a balancing act between cost and safety. You guys know I've come up here many times asking to reduce the speed limit on some of our smaller roads from 30 to 20. We all know that a lower speed limit increases safety, makes public safer. You're walking your dog, your child, and the answer I got was, well, it'd cost us a million dollars to change the signage so nothing happened. So I just want to ask and imply a request to determine the cost side of this ordinance beyond what is already out there for misbehavior on bicycles or whatever, and determine that we're not setting ourselves up for another conversation with the sheriff when he comes back for his next bite at the apple next year, and he says, well, you know, the e-bike ordinance cost me another five deputies and $2 million. We need to ask the question now before we put the ordinance in place so that we can understand the cost of the actions that you guys move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I have a solution to the speed limit signs since they're so expensive to change. The ones in residential areas, just remove them. You have a 30 mile an hour speed limit sign right next to a speed bump. That is silly. You have to slow down at a speed limit sign to go over a speed bump, and then you have the sign saying, hurry, speed back up. So just remove them because a lot of these roads actually will help determine the speed of the vehicles in the first place. You're just encouraging people to go faster in the residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? See, no one. Seeing no one come forward, we're bringing it back to the DAS. Any follow-ups? You got something else, Mayor?
I do. So with regards to the, kind of the catalyst as to why we started talking about this, I kind of want to bring it back. So the whole reason that we initially started discussing this ordinance was not the nitty gritty of what we've kind of, these rabbit holes we've kind of gone down. And it's important that we do this, because we're enacting legislation, but the whole point was because we have a quite, we've had quite a few incidents of reckless driving with some of the bikes that have been modified, and they've kind of been turned not into regular e-bikes, but into these kind of off-road, non-e-bike machines that have been very dangerous and have caused some trouble. We've had some troubled teens that have been getting into legal trouble with these things. So, and we had no teeth, really, anything to do to kind of deter that type of behavior. So that was the catalyst of what really kicked this off. So to your point, Mr. Webb, I, I don't believe that you're going to see this, you know, influx of all of this enforcement that's going to start going crazy over e-bikes. I think it's just allowing the sheriff's office to have some teeth for some of the reckless riders that we've seen out there, rightfully so. And we already have the sheriff's, you know, strategic plan as far as beefing up deputies, because they're already behind, and they've been doing a great job despite being behind. But we've, we're already anticipating, you know, earmarking certain costs as we move forward for public safety. So I don't really see an issue from, from that standpoint. The, the last thing I'll say on the age thing is, I will not be voting yes to Councilman Gambaro's motion. If it does fail, I will be moving to adopt this ordinance without the age requirement with the other changes that we made, because I think that that is where government should lie in what we are doing, and making sure that we are making our community safer, but not engaging in the overreach and trying to parent our residents' kids.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else from the council?
I've got a question.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Hold on just a second, Councilman Gambaro. Councilman Miller, what did you have?
Yes, sir. I just had a question for the city attorney. I know, as part of our discussion, we had talked about, was it mopeds and some other types of vehicles that are powered and comparable age restrictions on those. Do you recall, I don't recall off the top of my head, but do you recall like what mopeds are?
Yeah, mopeds are 18.
18 in Florida? And so then I assume motorcycles fall under kind of the same?
Yeah, there, I think motorcycle, you have to be 16, like driver's license. And you have to take a motorcycle course before you can ride on that one.
Yeah, it's just my, my concern with it is that obviously, you know, kids use these to get to school and things like that, but my concern is that they're, you know, some of these, 28 miles an hour is not a, a, you know, a slow speed for somebody that's six or seven or eight years old on a heavy vehicle, as has been mentioned multiple times. I just, and I know, it's, it's like, where, where is that line? What is the appropriate number if we're gonna decide on a number?
If I may just respond to that, because that was, you know, something that Commissioner Dan said last time he was here as well, these are heavier. You know, realistically, kids that age can't ride them. You don't see a lot of them riding them now. I think we're talking about kind of a non-issue, but, but still overstepping, and my concern is precedent. What precedent are we setting by telling parents they can or cannot allow their children to ride a certain type of bicycle? So, you know, because of the natural challenges in operating these bikes for kids, you don't see a lot of it as it is, because logistically, it's very tough for them. They can't even probably, like, pick it up off the ground like you can a regular bike, so, you know.
I'll say anecdotally, we walk our kids to school every day, and there are kids at elementary school, so, under 11 years old, riding e-bikes and other electric-powered vehicles.
And not a single one of them are on this accident list.
Right. No, I got you.
You know, so, I mean, if we haven't, if you're seeing that anecdotally, because mine's only 17 months, and he's not old enough to be riding bikes yet, if you're seeing that anecdotally, we know that kids are riding them, but not a single one of those kids is on this list. Again, we're talking about a non-issue, but we're still overstepping.
Got you. Now, and I agree, but the same argument can be made for any of our ordinances and codes, right? So whether it's work vehicles and where we draw the line with those, are we overstepping by saying you can't have pipes on the top of your vehicles or different things? So, you know, where do we draw that line? Again, it's the same argument both directions.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Councilman Gambaro, what did you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, as the, as the last councilman that's probably actually gone on patrol with, with Sheriff Staley, and I, I think this ordinance is the right thing to do from a public safety perspective. I mean, we saw it even the evening that, that I was on, I'm on patrol with him. I think, listen, it's that, it's the first step in the right direction, and making sure that, you know, we, we regulate the, the reckless activity on the e-bikes, and I think it's important that we, that we move forward on this. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Councilman Sullivan?
Just so we're, we're stating our positions, I will not sign the ordinance if it doesn't have an age limit on it.
It is right now, it's 11.
I know, I'm, I'm just saying.
That's the motion.
And my point about the kids under 11 is, they probably don't report a lot of accidents of children under age 11 that would get into the...
Statistic, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just two pointed clarifications. Mr. Miller, forgive me, so mopeds, not 18, 16, I clarified that. And then also, I do want to go back to Commissioner Dance's notes as he gave you guys in his email. Clarification, there are a couple of things. I interpreted the motion from Mr. Gambaro to keep the age at 11, not change, because this, Mr. Dance had changes in that, in that notes. And then also, there were two additional things I want to make sure that you guys are tracking. He added in there a school zone and crosswalk approach where you slow down, and then also he gave a definition for pedestrian walking speed. Those all are included in your motion, just wanted to clarify that for you.
That's, that's fine with me. Any more comments from the council? Ms. Cook, call the vote. Well, can you restate the question?
Restate the motion?
Yeah, restate, restate the motion.
So the motion is to pass the ordinance, the e-bike ordinance known as, let me read it into the record. Sorry, there we go. Ordinance 2025, amending chapter 42, creating section 42-7 of the Code of Ordinance, providing for the use and operation of bicycles and electric power cycles, along with the suggested notes from Commissioner Dance, minus the age requirements, and also vice mayor's request for specify with the throttle on the Class 3 for the e-bikes.
Okay, we got the motion. Call the vote, Ms. Cook.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
No.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item 6, ordinance 2025, amendment, amendment to the 2050 Comp Plan Incorporate the Water Supply Facilities Work Plan. Yes, Mr. Raisel? Mr. Papa?
Mayor, City Council, I'll help introduce. There's no presentation tonight. If you recall, for a comprehensive plan amendment, we're required to submit to the state. The state gave us no comments, there were no additional questions that the state had. That was also included in your agenda packet. Therefore, staff is here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Does the council have any questions?
None from me.
Everybody's good? Holy moly, we're rolling. You got any questions, Councilman Gambaro?
No, Mr. Mayor. Move approval of, of the ordinance. Thank you.
Second. We got a second. Any further discussion of the council? We'll open this up for public comment. Anyone have any public comment concerning water utility work plan? Seeing no one come forward, we're bringing it back to the DAS. Any follow-ups? Ms. Cook? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item H, Resolutions 7, Resolution 2025-X's Approving Residential Site Development, Residential Stormwater Review and Inspection Fees.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, as Mr. Buckley is approaching the table to get his presentation started, just wanted to refresh your memory, memory. We did discuss this as part of the budget process. We moved the residential stormwater inspectors from the stormwater division, department, and in that reorg, we eliminated a manager position and put more boots on the ground for stormwater purposes, and we moved those employees from the stormwater fund to the, their own division under community development. This area is not supported by the building fund, but it is supported by fees, and so when we looked at those fees, and are they cost recovery, since now its backstop is the general fund, Mr. Buckley did an analysis of those findings and saw that we were not cost recovery for the inspections and those services. But this group and this division does a little bit more than just the stormwater residential site inspections, they also do right-of-way permit inspections. If you imagine, we see a lot of those permits, whether it be MetroNet, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, anybody who's putting in large communication lines, and thus we collect a communications tax that supports the general fund. So this is a two-part analysis. The part one is what Patrick is gonna go over tonight, which is the stormwater inspections and right sizing those fees, and then we will bring to you the right-of-way ordinance in January to right-size, because there's a little bit of language that we need to change as far as beefing up our regulations and authority to hold some of the contractors who are responsible for damaging our sidewalks or residential areas, and thus, so Patrick is here to take it away for the stormwater side.
Yes, sir. Mr. Buckley?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, appreciate your time this evening. Quick, informal little update from September 16th, when this was originally in front of you, but was pulled. We did meet with the HBA, had some ongoing discussions about their concerns with the increase to the fees, as well as some of our inspection processes and the effects on, on the home building community in general. In the end, we agreed to continue our discussions, but that we would proceed forward with the fee structure as originally proposed. So there's been no changes to the resolution or the Exhibit A that was first in your packets on September 16th, I wanted to point that out, and then we'll just go through the short presentation. If you have any questions, please jump in.
Yes, sir.
This is about the residential stormwater fees, as summarized by Acting City Manager Johnston. Just a quick recap, yes, we are a new division in community development, given the title Residential Site Development, consists of six FTEs, four inspectors, one engineering tech that primarily performs plan reviews, and a supervisor that keeps a good eye on the entire team. Standalone division, separate org code and separate budget. This item in front of council came about sort of by reverse engineering. We created the budget and realized we needed to, of course, match some revenue to that budget that was created for this new division. We have two work processes primarily that we deal with. We have a permit and plan review and inspections for new and existing residential construction, that's our stormwater inspections. It also includes work for residential projects, added additions to homes, pools, other impervious surfaces. There's quite a bit of plan review and inspection that is involved on those improvements that people are making to their property. The second work process, which is still to be vetted, fully vetted, that Ms. Johnston alluded to, was the right-of-way permitting inspection responsibilities. Per council's direction, policy direction, we had to develop a fee structure to ensure the residential site development division is self-funded from permit fees. Our permit fees are intended to cover plan review and site compliance inspections. Our plan review includes lot grading and drainage plans, forum board surveys, and final lot grading, grading and drainage certifications that were created. Some of that new process was created earlier this year with some changes to the technical manual that implemented some of our transition and some of our increased design criteria. Our inspections include items like pre-pour and after-pour inspections for driveway and aprons, field surveys to verify the as-built grading and drainage conditions are consistent with the lot grading and drainage certification, and our stormwater final and right-of-way final inspections to make sure all the remaining project, project work is, is in compliance, swales have been returned to functioning condition, the culvert pipe in the swales are functioning, and there's been no damage done to the right-of-way during construction. We also have a role in compliance inspections, maintaining compliance, city's compliance with its MSWAP permit. Compliance inspections are generally complaint-driven and involve items like illicit discharges of stormwater and other discharges of improper materials, and also involve improper installation and or maintenance of erosion control measures such as silt fencing, sod buffering, and inlet Our right-of-way permit fees that are still yet to be explored into January of next year include plan review for the various right-of-way work projects. A big part of our project control is providing GIS project mapping and cataloging the various permits. As you can imagine, right-of-way permits aren't address-specific to a specific lot or property, but stretch across blocks, streets, and areas of the city, and therefore, we need to keep an eye on where those are occurring throughout the city. We need to develop some mapping capabilities and a means to catalog those. Eventually, the goal would be to have this a public-facing map where the public could access it, see what's going on in their neighborhood, who's working and where, and why, and that sort of thing. We also have to conduct site inspections, respond to citizen complaints, which are numerous unfortunately, and damage to the right-of-way and private property that occurs by many of contractors who are working in our right-of-way. Part of our analysis for the stormwater fees, residential stormwater fees, we looked at the last rate study that was in, done in 2021. That revealed a few thing, things to us. Number one, that, that our processes and, and the things that we do have not changed. We're doing more of them by volume, but really, we're doing the same type of plan reviews, we're doing the same type of inspections. So really, our touches on the permits have not changed. We looked at the revenue from 2024 and the year-to-date revenue in '25, and the expenditures that we have and we evaluated, compared the project revenue and expenditures to come up with a number for 2026. Focus was primarily on the year-to-date '25 numbers, taking into consideration the downturn in the last couple of months in permanent activity in recent months. We considered fully encumbered FTE positions at a rough hourly cost of $65 per hour, and we looked at our budget of 800, now, right now, it's about $804,000, and came up with a fully encumbered FTEs, which are roughly $134,454 divided by the number of hours worked in a year. Pretty easy math at this point, but come up with a number of about $65 an hour. We also made a decision to assign 4.5 FTEs of the division out of that six, or 75% of the workforce, to assign to the residential stormwater plan reviews and inspections. And that translates to a rough budget number of about $605,000 assigned for this work. As done with the 2021 rate study, plan review inspection tasks have been assigned, expected times. A formal time study was not completed, we don't necessarily think that that's necessary at this point, we just did an evaluation of the tasks to determine their validity. This first bullet has been a little bit problem, troublesome, it, it is meant, I probably should have used the work, the term revenue and not work in this, in this bullet. This is just a standalone statistic, not really meant to relate to anything more broadly, that roughly 73% of our division's stormwater residential revenue comes from new construction, and the other comes from, 27% comes from existing projects. It's just a stat to say that we really, while we raise the, proposing raising the fees for new construction, we need to raise the fees for all the permit types across the board. We've determined that four hours of work is necessary to get a residential permit issued through plan review and also inspections, but our current fees cover only 2.3 hours. through plan review and also inspections, but our current fees cover only 2.3 hours. Ultimately, that's a result of the increases in expenditures over the last few years since 2021 and our fully encumbered rates increase. So ultimately, a fee increase was necessary to cover the inspection, inspect expenditures, excuse me. So the fees for the residential site development portion of the work have gone from a combined total of $150, this is again for new construction, to $260, which is roughly a 74.5%, I guess, During this process, stormwater and engineering stepped in and asked for a small increase for their portion of the work, which is a review that's primarily known as our swell plan review, which relates to our site inspections. Engineering reviews the grading and drainage plan for the purpose of positioning, the horizontally and vertically, the culvert pipe in the swale, to make sure that that swale can be completed to continue to drain water that's generated by the new construction. They asked for an increase from $200, $240, but collectively, we went from $350, $500 for all residential stormwater-related fees. So the fees for permits, as I said previously, the fees for permits for existing residential construction increased accordingly. And again, these fees are based on predicted times, how long it takes us to do our work. We also explored some process improvements that will help ensure that we're capturing the right revenue for the work expended. That includes charges for corrected plans and revisions and re-inspections. We hadn't always done that. Looking back a few years, many times, we have changes made to plans either through plan corrections or simply voluntary changes that the contractors are making. And it's important that when we rack up the time that it takes to review those changes, that we are charging, charging a correlated fee to cover that work and certainly for re-inspections. Process improvement that we identified during this review is the re-inspection fees that we charge for continuing illicit discharge violations. Currently, we don't really have any kind of deterrent process for those re-inspections. If we are called with a complaint or verify a complaint in the field through our travels of an illicit discharge occurring, which may include discharge into a swale from materials like concrete slurry, pollution, other forms of pollution, down silt fences, erosion into neighboring lots, into open space, things of that nature, we write the correction for the contractor. We make a date for return trip, give them a chance to fix it. But ultimately, that re-inspection fee provides very little deterrence to both create an impetus for the contractor to clean up the violation and to prevent it from reoccurring. What we're proposing in part of this process is a re-inspection, our first inspection fee that you can see in Exhibit A to the resolution is $32.50. And that re-inspection, these are line items G, H, and I, and J in Schedule 2 of the Exhibit A, which is the bottom chart, residential site development, residential stormwater inspection fees. You see, the first inspection is $32.50. That's a standard charge. Second inspection is also $32.50. But if the inspection on the third trip reveals that the violation persists, has not been removed, that's intended to increase to $75. And if we return, I guess, a third or more time, then we're looking at a $150 fee. We don't intend to apply that, except in cases where it's been documented of what the expectations are for the contractor, to remove the violation and how to go about it. But we're not seeing any progress or movement towards compliance. I think it's an appropriate level to help spur into action.
Are we seeing a significant number of re-inspections because of non-compliance and not trying to correct the issue?
Yes, we are. We are seeing significant re-inspections.
Okay.
And on one of these properties, we're seeing six and seven and eight return trips that stretch out over the course of weeks.
And can you, can you explain to me what the difference is between this right-of-way drainage inspection is versus the stormwater fiatal or any of the other inspections? What does that entail?
The which, which items?
The, the right-of-way inspection that you referenced.
The right-of-way inspection is to make sure that there's been no damage during construction of the home of the city's improvements in the right-of-way.
Okay. So, so any of like the utility stuff that's going on in the right-of-way?
That's actually another inspection specific for utilities, but the roadway primarily or anything on the, in the swale side, the city right-of-way in front of the property line.
Okay.
But primarily streets.
Okay.
The next part of our analysis that we need to complete next, before January of next year relates to the right-of-way permits. As I said previously, 1.5 of our six FTEs are assigned to right-of-way permitting. That's a baseline base right now. It's a placeholder. It could very well be revealed that we need to sign more FTEs in coming years to make sure that we have the proper oversight of our right-of-way permitting process. That's roughly, right now, 25% of our division budget. And this early part of fiscal year '26, began on October 1st, is to analyze and adjust accordingly to make sure that we come back with a mechanism to capture the rest of our work. Our primary goals in this are to modernize our right-of-way regulations. That's contained in our municipal code, Chapter 42, Streets, Roads, Bridges, and Other Public Places, focuses on Article 5, Protection of the Streets, Roads, and Right-of-Way. We need to determine what appropriate permit fees are for this type of work, where those revenue sources are, primarily the communications tax that Ms. Johnston referred to, and the various process improvements that we can enact to ensure that we are providing the proper oversight. Again, the permit fees balance with the revenue sources and 25% of the division's budget. We want to make sure that we provide the necessary regulatory controls, oversights, and inspections with the eye to prevent damage, and when we do have damage, that we see prompt repairs. We have some informal numbers from Public Works and from utility that actually have presented to us some potentially alarming amounts of money that the city is currently spending on repairing the damage on its own. So we need to make sure that we are enacting the right violation penalties to discourage this, including work without permit, damage, and the required repairs of maintaining unsafe jobs sites.
I have a question for you. In regards to right-of-way, it came to my attention, I think, over the weekend, or maybe sometime last week, that some fiber utilities were damaged in the P section, you know, due to some digging, essentially. My understanding is that there's no requirement for locate services unless they're going greater than 12 inches, I believe.
Yes, I believe that's the 8111.
And that's a state requirement. And then, so obviously, either the lines were not 12 inches or they went more than 12 inches. But I guess my question is, do we have any means of, since we're talking about, you know, trying to ensure that damage isn't done, and when it's done, you know, it's paid for by the people who did the damage and not the city, do we have any means to, to try to change the behavior of those that, that don't get locate services before they start digging? I know last year, MetroNet, I think, hit the water line going to Flagler Beach twice in two days. So, so it happens, and the locate services, to my knowledge, are free for 811, I believe.
There is some cost to participating members actually joining the program to be, and they pay some fees for that service. It isn't for any line that's over 12 inches deep, and our minimum burial depth is 24. So there's really no excuse for not calling for those to locate.
So if someone hit something and didn't locate, what can we do as a city?
I would hope that Mr. Duffy could add to that. I feel that our ordinance is rather, rather weak on the violation penalties with no sudden built into our processes, right, that can affect immediate change. The state also has enforcement mechanisms through complaints through the 811 program, but those, again, are sort of reactionary, slap-on-the-wrist opposed to having some meaningful weight.
For that topic, I'd ask for consent from the council to, you know, have some information brought back to us, maybe some recommendations on how we can, you know, kind of tighten those up a little bit, and then, you know, maybe make a decision on that.
That's what I was referring to in my opening about this topic, is we're already on that. We prepared, we're prepared to bring that to you sometime in January.
Okay, good.
All right. So our residential permit analysis is complete. We have a proposed fee resolution. It provides the necessary fee adjustments to cover the residential site development division's work processes, again, based on 75% of our budget and workforce committed to those residential inspections. The right-of-way permit analysis is in progress, completion by the end of January, as per Ms. Johnston's information. And again, right-of-way permit fee schedule, modernization of our regulations, be solved. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Any follow-ups from the council?
So I just want to point out, well, first of all, thank you, staff, for doing this and for counsel for pushing this initiative, because obviously, we haven't been cost recovery. My question, I know the analysis that you did in order to figure out how we can be cost recovery, but my question is, are we comparable to neighboring or similar cities with this new fee structure?
I can't answer that. I did not compare ourselves to other cities during this process. It was somewhat of an emergency process. We had a budget that we committed to. We had to bring it back to you. Our processes, I feel, which have been compared to surrounding communities, are very unique and orchestrated and written precisely for the issues that Palm Coast faces, that may or may not be similar to other communities. We have put a lot of effort and muscle into writing some very comprehensive review criteria. Our, for example, our review criteria for new residential construction consists of 36 different criteria that we check. Our goal was to make sure that we're covered right now. So on a broader look down the road, I think that's worthy, though, to see how we stand with others.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and I completely understand where you're coming from, because if you look at the, kind of the summary sheet for this agenda item, it explicitly points out that we have put a lot of effort into and a lot of manpower is going to continue to go into the stormwater design criteria, checking to make sure these new infill lots, that the houses are being built to that criteria, et cetera, based on the infill lot flooding that we were seeing from the new builds. So this is a part of that overall kind of overhaul of our stormwater requirements for new builds on our infill lots. I will tell you, in the past few weeks, I have gone out to a lot of the properties that are experiencing flooding. I won't say as a result of, because I don't want to use that terminology, but after a new build has been constructed, either behind or next to them. And what I have learned is that ITT designed a lot of these properties to naturally flow in certain directions. So when they, when they designed and laid all this out, the drainage was supposed to happen a certain way, and some of those were designed to runoff to homes behind them. The problem with that is, once a new build is then built behind you, your home can no longer shed water on that house. So it's going to now start retaining that water that it was previously shedding. Is that the fault of the city? No, I don't think it's the fault of the city. Is it the fault of staff? No, it's not the fault of staff, but it's also not the fault of the homeowner, who was first in time. So now what's happening is, they buy their house, their house is designed the right way that it was intended to be designed as far as the stormwater drainage, but 10, 15 years later, new home gets built, and now, from the natural design that that first homeowner complied with and their builder complied with, they're now flooding because they're not able to drain and shed the way they were intended to drain and shed. So, you know, I think we're stuck in a place where this is a really good step. We've taken vast strides in this space as far as addressing a lot of the issues with infill lots and new builds, et cetera. But there's still work to be done. So I'm just asking staff to please continue to look at, particularly as we look at our LDC, what more can we do? What more do we maybe need to require from new builds? You know, I don't want to go and put all of these burdens on new homes being built because it's not necessarily their fault that it was designed to work that way either. But we have to do something, because I have come to learn that we know, we have known that we're going to approve a new build and they're designed for drainage, and it's correct, but when it's done, it is going to make the other home flood, not because necessarily that new build is shedding water onto the new home, but because that new home is now retaining or holding its own water that previously it was able to shed in directions where it was intended to shed when it was initially built. And I have a problem with that. So I just ask that, again, I commend staff and counsel for taking the steps we've taken, but our work is not done yet in this area. So I just ask that we continue. I know Lynn is continuing to work tirelessly on these issues as well. I know that we are looking at code enforcement, Acting City Manager, as far as what do we do now when we're, when we get a code enforcement complaint because we, because a resident thinks that water may be, in fact, shedding from the property next to them? How do we, what criteria do we create to analyze whether or not that is actually happening? I know staff is currently working on those things, and I'm appreciative of that. So I just want to, to make my position very clear that I think we've made great strides. I'm glad that we're taking the steps to impose these new fees, but there's still work to be done.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the council? Councilman Gambero, you have anything?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. I do think when we're looking at the LDC that, me personally, I've been here 20 years, whatever, but one of the problems I see, especially up in the B section, the north end by Burt of Paradise, those houses, the property lines, there's no easement between the property line. So if you've got two houses and they have fences, they both have vinyl fences, and there's no easement to run that, for that water to run down to a main drainage canal, it's always going to be an issue. I think in the LDC, we need to look at trying to put in some type of easement between houses that are butted up against one another, especially in the back, maybe not so much on the side, but in the back. For back, so when your property, it can flow to the front and to the back, but there's got to be some type of easement to allow that flow down to the main canals. Now, a lot of the new, newer developments in communities are a lot different than the older ones that we have, but that, that is something we really need to look at, that aren't NCDDs or HOAs, you know, just straight plotted lots. That's a...
I agree. I think we should look at that, Mr. Mayor. And I just had, just to add to that, to what the vice mayor was saying, so I recall that some of the areas, the, you know, there was a natural wooded buffer between the front house and the back house, and it was sloped to kind of go to that location, and then over the years, the trees died, ripped them out, and now you have these low spots that now all those waters kind of gathering in. Additionally, back then, before the city, it was an affidavit, I swear that it's got some good drainage on it, and it's 12 inches above the road, and there was no inspection. Nobody took a look at it. It was up to the builder. So some of those things are what we're dealing with now, is that, you know, all it was, you know, it didn't have a drainage plan, it just was 12 inches above the road, by affidavit. So it makes it extremely difficult because it's not consistent. It's not something that we can, we can't just raise the foundation of someone's house three feet to make it match up with the rest of the neighborhood or anything like that. So, yeah, we have to continue to be creative to try to figure those problems out.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Sullivan, you have anything?
No, no, I agree, and it, just as you say, the older sections.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We're going to. We got it, we got a motion to approve, second. Councilman Sullivan, we'll open it up for public comment if there's no more comments from the council. Yes, ma'am.
Jeanie Duarte.
Jeanie Duarte, unfortunately, it is sad that they're getting a lot of complaints and numerous complaints, but it's true, you cannot box in an older home and expect it to retain their drain when the newer home is being built next to them. I think it's the responsibility of the developers, it doesn't take a rocket scientist or an engineer to understand the flow of water. But the developer and whoever is the one building that house next to that older home should be responsible to make sure that they are veering out and making sure that the water is being directed properly so it's not affecting either home. So that's the responsibility of the developer for the new home. Also too, residents, they pay, what, $36 a month or so, but they never get services. They can take up, what, 30 years to get their swell fixed, redone? It seems as though services are going toward permitted projects. You said 73% for new construction, 27% for permitted. Well, that's 100% right there. That does not talk about the residentials and the swells that they're waiting for and waiting for. And a lot of the residents don't even know which way their swells are supposed to go because we're on such flat lands in most locations. So if they go out there and they do it themselves like they're supposed to, they may be redirecting it in the wrong direction because they're, they don't know. So it's really the responsibility. Then we pay monthly for a service that we're not getting. Unfortunately, it's the residents who are paying for services unrendered. So to raise fees for residents, I think is totally unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is, this is not for residents. This is for...
Some solutions, maybe. I used to do this for a living. 25 years ago, I was called an engineer review officer for DeKalb County. DeKalb's one of the four major counties of Atlanta at that time. They were adding about 75,000 to 150,000 people a year just in our county alone. My job initially was an engineer review, excuse me, erosion control inspection. I was out in the field. applied for a promotion. I came into the office, I started to do plan review. Vice mayor, to handle your issue, the only thing, we couldn't get our county commissioners to do anything. They just would not. We had improvements we needed to have done, so we had to make our changes administratively. My director just made the law and we handled everything. In the case of what you're talking about, two phases. We were handling entire neighborhoods that would be between 50 and 500 acres. Then, once that was approved through an engineering plan, we would require a site plan on every single residential lot. That meant that they, first the developers get an engineer, then the builder would have to go get a surveyor and show how each individual house was going to be built and not put water onto somebody else's property. And the builders would just complain and scream, "Holy murder." Cost them $500, and this is 25 years ago. We would just say, "If you want to get your building permanent, that's what you have to do." I approve everything he's doing. I think he's taken all the right steps. It's hard to do catch-up, but at some point you have to do it. We used a couple of tools that were more like sledgehammers. When we had problems with people with erosion control or stormwater runoff, we would issue a stop-work order. All of our field inspectors had the right to do that. It was a simple stop-work order. If the builders and developers did not abide by it, we would notify the sheriff. The sheriff would come out and shut the site down. If that many had to hook and book some of the cars, the trucks out there, that's what he did. We had very, very strong enforcement. But it was a totally different field because we were just white-hot development. We used to have a saying that unless everybody was mad at us, we weren't doing our job. The builders had to be mad at us, the citizens, builders said we weren't giving permits fast enough, citizens were saying we were giving them permits too much, tree huggers were saying we're letting them cut down all the trees, the builders were saying we can't cut down any trees. And the commissioners were mad at us because everybody's going to them and complaining to them, but they wouldn't give us the tools we needed. I think some administrative changes by your staff would probably be appropriate, just to say, "Here's the problem, here's what we're going to do." And I would try and get with Sheriff Staley because if you issue stop-work orders, that has to be backed up by something. You can't just say, "Stop work." That means stop work, and if you don't stop work, if you're out here the next day working again, we're going to shut you down and we're going to put you in jail. We did that many times. That'll get them shut up really quick. But at that point, there were so many developers and builders out there, there was a non-ending supply. So I approve of what he's doing. It's a terrible problem, you know, it's like trying to make water stop. I think he's doing a good job. Support him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tony Amaral, Palm Coast. The ordinance is correct. You do need to cover the, recover the costs that are being put out there. So I don't understand how it costs more to go inspect a job two or three times. And they do have guidelines, they do have mechanisms, there are stop-work orders that are allowed that can stop the progress until a major issue is resolved. So to say that we have to recover more to travel out there, again, the travel time is the same, the recovery is the same because it took half an hour to get out there and everything else. With that being said, we also need to look at what is being asked. Asking for erosion control, the new stormwater people are mandating, we've had this conversation before, silt fencing, mandatory silt fencing for a possible drainage issue or possible erosion. The rain, the issues, let's keep in mind that silt fence is not the only solution to erosion. It never will be. There are multiple access points, and if you can say where the erosion is happening, it's easier to correct than just to say, "You must silt fence." You cannot mandate one specific issue to solve a problem. There are multiple allowed. Let's also remember, Palm Coast has been under two municipalities when it came to permitting. The county, actually, we'll call it two and a half. The city, and they subcontracted out permitting and all that to an independent contractor for three or four years, and then the city got involved. In the time that the city has been involved, we have changed our drainage plans three, maybe four times because of guidance, that the city said, "These are the new guidelines you have to match." We were allowed for about a year or so to leave a natural buffer that was required by a previous arborist who was adamant about it. Those have come to roost because we always said, "Well, they're low. You can't adjust them. You can't make them flow if there's 40 pine trees in that last 20 feet." So the fact that, to say that the new home per se is the problem and not the city, the city does have some onus in this. The ordinance was set, they were modified because they saw errors. And I'm not saying you can't change it, I'm not recommending you never change it, but you have to recognize the problem arose for many reasons. And again, I just don't see the, adjusting the costs multiple, you know, to 175 when you're being asked to do stuff that is not the only solution, and we don't have a recourse for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comments? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to Duss. Any follow-ups from the council?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, you know, in terms of cost recovery, my understanding of that re-inspect is not cost recovery. That's punitive for behavior change. You know, in terms of the other building fees from the rest of the department, those are state mandated, but these are not. So we don't have a specific requirement to only be cost recovery and only maintain a certain balance for these fees. And so that's the, that's the, you know, unfortunately, there's some people that do not fix the problems when they're, you know, re-inspected. And, you know, I don't think that's you or people like you, but they represent kind of you as well, right? And so they give you a bad name. So I think enforcing these on those, those people in terms of the re-inspections is a good thing because it kind of slows down some of those, those people that do not seem to care if they're, you know, not fixing their problems and affecting the neighbors of those homes.
Thanks, sir. Anything else? Last mayor?
Yes, to add to that, I mean, to your point, this is a deterrent. Like, get it right the first time. If you don't get it right the first time, get it right the second time. You know, you've still got two bites at the apple without anything punitive. As far as, you know, some of the, I think, precautions that we're requiring, here's the issue with, I have a low tolerance with the woe is me kind of, you know, from a builder perspective respectfully. And the reason for that is if it's not done right and the neighboring property is negatively affected, there's nothing that can unwind that. It's already done. There's no injunctive relief that can be imposed. You've already kind of caused the issues. I mean, we see this with, you know, even a lot of developments that are supposed to be wetting the dust and the sand and all that. You know, there's neighboring properties that still get a ton of dust and, you know, from clear cutting and things like that all over their properties. And the worst that we can do is say, "We're sorry, we'll make them go back out and wet everything a little bit more." Well, sorry doesn't help the homeowner that's already had the damage done to their property. So it's our job to try to look ahead and prevent these types of things from happening to people who have zero control over what's going on to, next to them, when a new build is going in or when a new development is going in. Unfortunately, these types of ordinances and rules and regulations get put in place because people didn't do it right the first time and repeatedly. And I have fielded those complaints repeatedly. So I commend you all for trying to look ahead and doing what's necessary. I would encourage, just as I said a couple of weeks ago, you know, to the contractors out there who are doing things the right way, who are pulling the permits, who are licensed, who are doing their jobs in a way that protects our consumers and should be then getting repeat work and doing good work in our community, kudos to you. I'll continue to support you. But to those who aren't doing it right, you either need to go build somewhere else or pay the fees for not doing it right.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Mr. Amaral said after the third re-inspection, it was 175. The way I read it, it's 150.
It is, 150.
He said, yes, I think it's 75 and then 150.
I thought he said it was then 150.
I may have said that.
It's 150.
It's the fourth time, the fourth time they have to come out, it would be increased to $150.
Yes.
I had a question about the, the silt fencing requirements. In terms of that, is that, I didn't see that specifically in here as, you know, what, what the requirement is?
So that's part of the city's stormwater criteria that's in our technical manual, and there's a variety of ways to prevent erosion and various components, including vehicle traffic, tracking measures, natural vegetation, sod buffers, silt fencing. We oftentimes cite silt fencing because it's the quickest way to stop an erosion matter immediately, whereas putting a sod buffer down relies on that sod to be rooted and maintained during construction. But, but there are a variety of ways. They're just not spelled out in here. It's just the criteria that we have. When we issue a violation, we tell them what they need to do to remove the violation.
So you dictate that they put in a silt fence?
Well, not, not by itself. There's multiple. Although the builders have been unhappy with us because we've been right in just the silt fence part because our inspectors feel that's the fastest and quickest way to remedy a problem. But ultimately, they have choices to, to address the discharge.
I know there's, you know, multiple products, but aside from just the silt fence, there's a gentleman contacted me like eight months ago about trying to get it written into the technical manual that we could use that product as well. Nothing specific about that product, but I know there's multiple other products. Do our code allow for, or our technical manual allow for other types of products besides silt fence?
Not by name or, you know, brand or anything like that, but we would be open to make, excuse me, to look at any of those materials that have been proven and tested and are successful in other communities. We can write those into our manual at any time.
Okay.
Anything else from the council? Councilman Gambaro, do you have anything?
Nothing further this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion from the council, Mr. Cook called a vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to H, Resolution 8, Resolution 2025, approving an agreement with the Flagler Humane Society for Animal Shelter Services. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and city council. Mr. Zobler is here to answer any questions, but included in your agenda packet and in the agenda summary, we've been working with Flagler Humane Society on an updated contract. This is just a yearly contract per your request, and there's been some, some language change within the contract and associated fee increases that we've negotiated with the Humane Society. So Mr. Zobler is here to answer any questions you may have.
Just the total amount of the contract?
It's on a, it's a per-fee basis, based on the number of animals we deliver to the shelter and the...
Okay. And how much did it increase? I forgot.
I believe we're targeting about 125,000 this next year, and that's up from 90-something thousand from last year.
And the actual fee per animal was changed from 190, I mean, 90 to, or...
Changed from 132 to 156.
156, so it went up slightly. And that's probably not enough to do what they need to do out there, but that's what we got. Any discussion from the council?
And this includes all the requests we made as well. Background check, board member...
Yeah, the contract was changed.
City council, this contract also calls for one council member to be appointed as a liaison to meet with two board members and a city staff person once per quarter. So I would ask that you appoint a council member to represent the city council at that meeting.
And I would ask to be the liaison. I know when we had kind of discussed this previously, I was going to be the one that attended the board meetings, and then we kind of got into this joint county-city thing that we were doing, and there were a lot of things up in the air. So I would ask to be that liaison for this next year. I've worked with that ARF group a lot. I've really, really dug into this, so I would like to be the one that represents the council on that.
I support that.
I have no problem with that.
Just, just to reiterate, this is kind of the stopgap measure while we're trying to work out some of the more significant problems. And my feeling about this is that for animal control, we should have one entity that does it for the whole county. And I know that's not this, each, each city and, and the county, and we all have our separate contracts. I think that's inefficient, and as we approach the whole problem of the Humane Society and all that, I think there are some better solutions. But right now, this is just to keep things going for another year, the way I look at it.
Single, single source provider. There's, right now, there's nothing we can do about it, but we're working on it. You got anything, Councilman Gambaro?
No, sir. Thank you.
I have a few questions about the contract itself. So in, on the very first page, it says that "The Humane Society shall maintain and operate an animal shelter in a manner consistent with, quote, 'best practices adequate for the confinement housing and disposal of animals.'" We haven't defined what best practices are. Do we have a definition of that somewhere?
No, I do not.
Okay, can we look at that? That doesn't mean anything.
So it does say in that paragraph you listed, Ms. Pontieri, is along with the above-listed Animal Bill of Rights and Five Freedoms and Animals attached in Exhibit A. So that's kind of an all-inclusive...
Okay, so are we defining best practices then with the Animal Bill of Rights?
It's an inclusive and also best practice within the, I would say, operating an animal shelter.
Okay. Paragraph three on page two, what, I guess, and John, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, what I have consistently heard from many residents who have emailed me after some issues they've had when trying to surrender animals, is that they are told by Flagler Humane Society to go home and call our animal control, to come then bring the animal in. So I know this paragraph talks about animal intake from us, but how is it handled? Do we have something that's specific to the way animal intake occurs when a resident surrenders the animal?
I believe we do.
And, and sorry, it's kind of a two-parter. And is there something that can be worked in the contract that says that Humane Society is not to tell residents, "Go home and call animal control," to then go pick up your animal and surrender it? Because it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, Amy, you're here, so maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, please, that if a resident turns in an animal but can't pay the fee, they don't get turned down, whereas the city absolutely has to pay the fee. So by telling the resident, "Go call animal control if you can't afford to pay the fee," it's a roundabout way to get the fee. I could be off-base, I don't know, but that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I don't know the history on that or have any experience with it. Perhaps, Amy, it would be best to answer that.
Amy, can you answer the question, please? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, actually, um, quite the opposite is true. We don't turn people away. We do ask, if somebody is turning their animal in, um, we do, we usually ask them to make an appointment first, and sometimes they're not satisfied with that. So they may be the ones to go home and say it's a stray. We get lied to all the time. But quite the opposite, we actually would rather have the owners in front of us so that we can talk to them about, is this animal good with kids? Is this animal, you know, so we don't want, we actually thought about asking for that to be in the contract, that animal control not accept owned animals. Owned animal, owned animals have to come to the shelter to be surrendered, because when animal control brings them in, we don't get any of the details on them. It's, I, I'm happy to give you any report on what we actually get paid when owners surrender them, because a lot of times the reason is they're losing their home, or, you know, sometimes it's financial reasons that they're turning them in in the first place. So we rarely get anywhere near enough to cover like day one, um, as far as a surrender fee.
Okay. And I appreciate that. That's why I'm, I'm glad you're here, because as you get lied to, I'm sure people fluff stories to us as well. Um, so is there something that we could work into the contract that, that basically, um, states that if a homeowner, well, let me ask you this, sorry, before I take that leap. When you all ask the homeowner to make an appointment, what's the lead time on that?
It depends. Um, sometimes we may ask them for 10 days or so. Usually it's less. Um, it just depends on, you know, how, what, first of all, we usually ask them, what's the reason you're surrendering the pet? And if there's a reason, if there's something that we can help them with, if it's a veterinary issue, can we get them into our clinic and have the doctor look at them for free? Or, you know, like if it's training, let's give them advice. So it's not, it's not even, it's not only that we're trying to put them out for a little while so that, you know, we can, maybe they'll change their mind, but what can we do to help them change their mind so they keep the pet?
Okay. Yeah, I, I kind of see some issues with that, because I do think that you would have, whether it's intentional, I don't think it's intentional when you guys are asking them for appointments, but I, I think that probably does result in people just saying, well, I'll just go home and call animal control, um, which we want to try to prevent for a lot of reasons. So is it possible to offer appointments within three days? Can we, can we kind of strike that medium here? Because, I mean, I want to work with you guys on this, but I also want to prevent what is probably an unintended consequence of the 10-day request for an appointment.
Is the 10-day just because you don't have enough time to get that appointment in?
That's become, that's become sort of the industry standard. If you, you know, I know, like you say, you're researching a lot of other places. The municipal shelters, a, a lot of the shelters are either completely turning animals away is kind of the, the thing lately, or giving people a couple of weeks to cool off or to find other, to find other placement. Maybe there's a family member that can take the pet instead. So it's a bit of a, an industry standard now. If anything, we are already kind of shorter. If somebody walks in with the animal and, you know, they don't, they, they say they need to surrender it today, they surrender it today.
Well, yeah, because I was going to ask, I mean, if, if an animal bit, then obviously they don't want that animal back in their home, nor maybe should it be. So in circumstances like that, I would assume you all allow surrender of the animal then?
Definitely, definitely. And that, you talk about unintended consequences, that's what has worried me, because I feel like words getting out that like, oh, the buzzword is, if you say it's aggressive, they'll take it right away. So then I worry that animals are going to get, you know, people are going to lie about the behavior of the animal just to get us to take it right away. So it's definitely a balancing act, for sure.
Okay. Can we, can we then write into the contract, uh, maybe we split maybe on this and say five days, that if, if, in this intake paragraph, if a, if a homeowner, um, attempts to surrender an animal, that, um, Flagler Humane Society will offer an appointment within five or at the five-day mark or something to that effect? You all can work on the language. Because I have gotten a lot of people telling me, I tried, they wouldn't allow me to do it. And so that results in, to your point, animal control doing it knowing no history, and to my point, now the city paying for what a resident probably should pay for. So we, we're kind of getting hit on both ends here by this.
Yeah, I think that's definitely worth more conversation.
Okay. I appreciate that. Um, and then I did, while you're there, sorry, I had another question for you. Um, once an animal is deemed dangerous, how is it determined whether or not it's released? Because the contract says that our animal control is to make determinations as to, I think, whether or not an animal is dangerous, but not as to, like, our, it doesn't seem like our animal control has the, um, discretion to determine when a dog should be released. How is that determined?
Yeah, I can talk in on that. So when we have a dangerous dog situation, the dog is brought to the Humane Society, they sign off on it saying, we will keep it. Ms. Grossman team then has an investigation. They call, they do what's called an initial determination, and based on that investigation, they say, we recommend that this dog be deemed dangerous. Uh, that is then served on the, the dog owner. The dog owner has seven days to respond to that. It either appeal or to accept that the dog is deemed dangerous. If they do not appeal, then the dog is automatically deemed, deemed dangerous, uh, and then, uh, the homeowner takes its requirements. As long as the homeowner meets the requirements, because when the dog is deemed dangerous, you have to get chipped, uh, it has to show that they are in kennel 24/7. So as long as they meet those requirements and work that out with Ms. Grossman and the city, then the dog is usually released from the Humane Society.
So under no circumstances, unless that criteria is met, can a dog be released?
Correct, yeah. They, they don't, they don't ever release unless Ms. Grossman gives them some type of written authorization for it to be released.
Okay. Sorry, I, I know I had a lot of, um, notes, but I want to make sure, because we've had a lot of conversation about this. What happens if one of our other organizations, our volunteer organizations, come to the Humane Society? So if Community Cats or Smart or something like that, how, how are they treated? Are they treated as a regular resident if they come to the Humane Society with animals?
Actually, um, had put in a call to Barbara a couple of weeks ago about this, and then we just never met up. But what's, what's been happening is these organizations are taking in animals, and then quite often, they're bringing them to us. So they're no longer strays. So we're not billing the city, but then they're saying, well, they're not, I'm, we're not, they're not our animals. So we end up taking care of the animals, doing all the medical, getting them processed and adopted, but we don't get any funding from either the city or the, at that point, they're the pet owner, but they don't see themselves as the pet owner.
Do you track that somehow? So in other words, like, I know we get numbers on what we surrender versus what residents surrender. Do you all track that as well?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Okay. I haven't seen any, I, I guess, dis- distinguishing, uh, like in any of the numbers that we've gotten, I, I haven't seen anything distinguishing that from like reg- regular resident turnover or city turnover.
Right. I, I think it depends on what report you're looking at. I think, like, what we send in, um, to animal control is just the animals that are getting billed to the city. That's not on that report at all, and that's, that's the more itemized bill. But I can get you that.
Yeah, if you, I'll send you an email.
It's not tons, it's not, it's not a lot, but it does add up. You know, I mean, we get a bunch of kittens, and kittens are the most expensive animals that we take in because of all the vaccines and time, so it's, it's some, for sure.
Okay. And then the, the contract defines under paragraph 10D, well, it doesn't define the word "overpopulated." So it says, "The Humane Society must not be overpopulated and shall have population management procedures in place to maintain an appropriate capacity." What are we defining as overpopulated?
So in the contract, I don't have to wear the paragraph, but does say that a, every animal come is, should have room for space for, in each crate or gate or whatever, how you house the, the animals. If, oh, I would interpret overpopulated, you can't take in the animal. That's how I would interpret that.
Do we, do we have anything in place to where if the Humane Society says, we're at capacity, that you all give us notice of that?
Well-
I know it changes often.
Yeah.
And so I can appreciate that, but-
Yeah. It's, it's nights, well, it was last Thursday night, um, the city brought us in 19, 19 animals? I'm sorry?
19.
Yeah, 19. So, I mean, and with the 98 cats from July.
Yeah.
Yes, there's minutes that we are overpopulated, but we make arrangements. I got large walk-in cages that we borrowed from Halifax Humane Society. We, so we make do, and then, once those animals get adopted, we're back to normal again. But the animals themselves are, never suffer because of that. The, the accusation of, we keep them in crates for months at a time, and that's not the case. The animals that are in crates are waiting for surgery or have just arrived, but the animals themselves aren't crowded. We might be crowded. After the 98 cats, I think I had 16 of them in my office for a while, but they were in the big walk-in cage. So we may be crowded, but the animals always have more than enough space according to like the five freedoms that, you know, are, are mentioned.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I didn't hear anything about what you just referenced as far as what people have said. That's not why I asked the question. I, I'm asking the question because we're trying to plan for the future, but it's hard, and we're also battling with a lot of people saying a lot of things, to your point. But it's hard for us to plan for the future of what the needs are, what your needs are, what our needs are, what the county's needs are, if we don't know these things. So I, I guess, you know, some type of notification if you guys are, quote, "overpopulated" for, let's say, more than 72 hours, something like that, because we have to be able to track these things. And, and from my perspective, my, my largest frustration with the Humane Society, shutting out all of everything that people have said, is I haven't seen a strategic plan for, for expansion. That's my frustration, and I think part of having a strategic plan for expansion is keeping these types of metrics. How many days out of the year are you, quote, "overpopulated"? How do we know what our future needs, what our current needs are, if we don't have that data?
Yeah.
So I would ask, I don't know that it's necessarily something that needs to be put in the contract, but that's the kind of information that we need. So I don't know if maybe you want to work out with Barbara on what's reasonable from that perspective?
It's just hard with, like, a hard, fast number to say, we're overpopulated if we have 300 animals, because a cage, you know, a, a nice big cage can house a mama and 10 puppies, but not 10 adult dogs. So it, it, each population is different, so you can't really put a hard, fast number on it. Our cat colony rooms can hold six cats, or they can hold 12 cats, and the cats are just as comfortable, because they got a lot of vertical space.
I think, I think by the definition, anytime that you're creating temporary housing to, you know, whether it's pulling in cages from another Humane Society to put them in an office or something like that, that's when we're now overpopulated, right?
Okay. But that's, like, that's in response to the 98 cats that were brought in one day.
This is not, it's not saying, hey, it's your fault that a lot of cats were dropped off. It's so that we know that we don't have enough space so that we can plan for that space.
Right.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me just cut to it, okay? It is hard for us to plan on what we actually need. It's hard for us to say, no, Humane Society's got it, we don't need any other arrangements, because, no offense, but you can't even really define it, and that we can't define it, you can't define it. What does overpopulation look like? I get that it can vary based on whether they're kittens, or puppies, or adult dogs, or, you know, big cats. I, I understand all that, but I think from a base starting point, we have, we have to at least say, okay, we're going to go through and do an inventory of the Humane Society. We've got, I know you've got the two big, I don't know if you call them colony rooms, but before you get to the dogs, I've been to the Humane Society numerous times, um, you've got the two big cat rooms, right? What is the standard of what should be in that space based on the amount of space? Like, let's have an inventory. What is the max that, and, and come up with that number? If you don't have that number to begin with, we don't know what we need to plan for. And, and to that, we can't even set money aside to do it and to help you, Amy. I mean, I, I'm, I'm really trying to get there with everybody and, and satisfy a lot of concerns here, including being very sensitive to what you all are battling from a public perspective and, and optics perspective. So, but I need your help to get this data together, right? So again, it's not something that needs to be written to the contract, but can you, we commit to having a follow-up conversation on where, where, where's the baseline for us to start here, to start gathering that information? The only thing that I was concerned in, about in the contract was that definition of overpopulated, but doesn't really even sound like we know what that is right now. So I think we just need to keep the lines of communication, um, open. Uh, the, the last thing I would like added is, um, under paragraph 17D, um, on page eight, it says that you all have to give a certain reporting. I would like that to include financials.
Sure.
Can we include that? Okay. Thank you. And that's all I have. Sorry, Mayor.
So do we need to table it, to fix those things in the contract? Are we, you're good with that, Marcus? You got the corrections?
I got it ready.
I'm so sorry. There's one more. So, um, under, um, paragraph 21, subsection B, sub subsection I, it says, "Costs per impounded animal. The city shall be billed $156 for each dog-cat intake for the five-day intake period." Is that regardless of how long the animal is at the animal shelter, or is there a minimum?
Correct.
Okay. So if it comes in for half a day and then goes back out, we get charged $156?
If it comes in as a stray, yes, because we still do all the medical as soon as it gets there. And then also, on the other hand, if it stays for nine month, nine, 10 months before it gets adopted, we don't charge more. So that's where we, that's still much less than what our costs are.
Okay. So it's $156, no matter what?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? So you got the changes to the contract. Uh, Councilman Gambaro, do you have anything?
No, Mayor, I'm good. Thank you.
We get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with the changes.
We got a second.
Second.
We got a second from Councilman Miller. Any further discussion from the DICE? Uh, we'll open this up for public comment. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Chantel.
Chantel, first of all, why do you all vote before the public comments?
We just made a motion, ma'am. We have it voted.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, when I read, uh, the, the contract, I realized that was not a no-kill shelter, and that really bothered me. I mean, how long can those animals stay in the shelter before they say, oh, that's enough for you, you, we need to euthan- euthanize you, because you've reached your time? And also, if you have a dog that gets there and who is very afraid, because he's been, uh, he's out of his territory, whatever, afraid, and he's mistaken for an aggressive dog, uh, I mean, do they have people over there who just have enough knowledge of what an, a afraid dog can do? Um, and then, if, if the dog looks like an aggressive dog, they can say, oh, he has rabies. Now, there's another thing for rabies. You can kill the dog, cut the head, and analyze the brain. I mean, if, I don't know, I have no words for that, and I think I read it in the contract.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor, some of the information you're looking for, I think, would be in the records of your animal control department. I have never seen this before in a county, but I've always lived in larger counties. I've always been in counties where animal control handles animals that are involuntarily taken from a home. Humane Society handles animals that are voluntarily surrendered. If you need to see how big your animal control shelter needs to be, I would look at the records of your animal control, because they typically take animals away, not voluntarily surrendered. See what those records are. Am I giving you an idea? It's a starting point. I agree that I don't think any shelter can ever sustain itself for very long as a no-kill shelter. It's commendable, it's just not attainable. As far as what the woman was saying about how can you tell the difference between a nervous dog and an aggressive dog? Dogs are all about body language. You just have to watch the way they are. I've been around dogs a long time. Nervous dogs have a very unique way of behaving. Aggressive dogs typically don't have that same behavior. They just bite. They don't really bother with much of anything. A couple of questions about the existing Humane Society, and I think you guys know my views on this. If you were not aware, Governor DeSantis signed along the bill about a year and a half ago that made any pit bull or pit bull cross in a public housing facility subject to immediate termination by the Housing Authority police. They do that because the gangbangers that live in the Housing Authority cannot carry a firearm because that's an automatic 10-year sentence in a federal prison. So, they turn their dogs loose on the police. By that same way of thinking, how do we know in this Humane Society that gangbangers or others aren't going to come in? We say, "Well, they're not mean," when a gangbanger can turn any dog mean. How do we know that the gangbangers are not going to take these dogs and make them into bait dogs? Bait dogs are naturally normal dogs, and they're thrown into a fight situation because they're bait. They get eaten alive by other dogs. How do we know that the kittens and puppies and other dogs we have are not going out to support fight clubs? I'm not saying they're in Flagler. Typically, they're in very rural areas. They're going to be more in areas that are not served by police areas. But they've become so sophisticated that they'll actually bring in families now with children. And they'll adopt pets, and those pets will just end up becoming food for fights. I don't know how you can do that other than enlisting the sheriff's health to be able to check, at least check an ID to see if the people coming to you have any kind of a criminal background. That'll show up. That's the only things I have for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. I'm in the process of working with Ms. Grossman to determine, we were talking about licensing of pets in Palm Coast. And there was, and there still is, some confusion about the responsibility from the vets to send rabies and other documents to the authority, the pet authority, which is under the county, not under the city. And from what I've been able to ascertain, the records aren't reaching the city of Palm Coast so that we can help our citizens understand there is a licensing requirement, which is missed revenue, which we could look at to find. Secondly, a $5 license? That's phenomenal. I think most people, I have two dogs, and it costs me probably $5,000, $6,000 a year to get them shot, rabies, feeding. I mean, it's an expensive, expensive commitment. I would suggest looking at the option of increasing the licensing, both trying to find those that aren't licensed, but also increase it to $15 revenue, which would be a much larger source of money to assist the Humane Society. So, you can help them accept those high-quality documented dogs that the elderly or people in hard times can walk into their office, hand them over the dog, not worry about a cost, not worry about it, and know that the Humane Society has a pet with a history, value, and a higher probability of getting placed vice being told, "There's a cost, there's a backup." They go home, they're at their wits' end, they don't know what to do, so they take it on a short drive down to Bel Air and release it. So, there's opportunities to find funding, to look deeper, to solve this problem temporarily until the county and you guys get together to make a bigger, and I know y'all are working on trying to find a much better resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the DIAS. Any closing comments?
Yes, I was just going to add first, Chantel, I think they described the, you know, in terms of a dangerous animal, that's a determination made by code enforcement.
State statute.
Yeah, and then, in terms of Mr. Webb, I think, didn't we ask for some analysis, I think maybe at Joint County-City, about the licensing fees? City manager, can we, can we look at that? Is everybody okay with that, to look at those licensing fees?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Cook, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gambero.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any issues with the consent agenda items? There's plenty of them.
A lot of them, but it's...
It is a new budget, so...
It's new budget cycle, typical contracts.
Yes.
I just have a, the first thing on top of mind was the solar panels, which I think is the first item on the consent.
It is.
And so, it says in there that we received a grant for, for this.
Yes, we did.
And that has a requirement to purchase. My main question is, have we looked at like, having like a PPA versus buying the panels and things like that?
PPA, I know.
So, it's like, someone else owns it? They put it on?
He's talking about power purchase agreement.
Right, so...
The grant that we went out for and sought for was to put...
Specifically for us to own, to purchase it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we had looked at both sides of that cost.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Motion to approve?
I'm moved.
We got a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Do we need public comment on this? Any, any public comment on the consent agenda? Ms. Denise Henry? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the DIAS. Any follow-ups? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gambero.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to our, our final public participation, if I'm not mistaken. Our final public participation. Anyone have any final comments? Yes, sir.
Just in response to what some of the other people said, the gentleman that said he's got a problem with trucks coming through town, that's not uncommon. Again, I came from the Atlanta area. That happens all the time. Mayor, I think you and the sheriff might need to reach out to the Florida State Patrol. If I'm not mistaken, they have a division called weights and measures. So, sometimes these trucks come through because they're trying to avoid weights and measures. They're overloaded, and they know they are. That's one way you can just take care of them. Weights and measures almost always result in fines for the truckers when you talk.
I thought about that too, because I worked that. I was mix-all. I did that for a living as a compliance officer. If they're running from State Road 100 down to US 1, they're not trying to avoid any weight scales on that.
There's cameras and all sorts of stuff.
And plus, they have active policing. They've got, they've got WIM, what's called Weight in Motion, out, out on the interstate. But the sheriff has cameras everywhere, and they can take a picture of a DOT number and the license plate of a truck going 80 miles an hour down the truck.
So, they're just trying to avoid traffic?
It's their, probably no normal routes. The taxation on those trucks are, they pay their dues to drive on the roads. And if they're allowed on the roads unless there's an ordinance created to keep them off the roads, they're allowed to drive on the roads. You can complain about it all you want, but there, as long as they're obeying the traffic laws and, you know, state statute, there's nothing you can do about it.
I don't know if the gentleman was talking about the renters having too many people. I don't know if this was something that would ever work. There was a city in North Atlanta called Milton, very, very expensive homes. Airbnb would rent them out for a weekend, and they'd have terrible problems. They'd have cars blocking the roads throughout the entire community. They contacted the Georgia State Patrol. Georgia State Patrol said, "We can't help you." So, at one point, the mayor and council just contacted all the local tow trucks. They towed 50 to 100 vehicles, and these were things like Maybachs, Porsche. Very, they had millions of dollars of cars going away, and all the people were in the house when they came out, their cars were gone. I don't know if that'd be useful here. It might be, it might not be. Vice Mayor, your comment about the bicycles and the accidents being more boys versus girls, that's because boys will be boys.
Mr. Mayor, this has already been talked about with the body bikes.
They're, I used to teach high school, and I think boys just have a certain self-destructive tendency. I know I did when I was that age. There's something the biologists call the rule of 102. In any given year, there's 102 male children born for every 100 female children. There's a reason for that. If you ever want to see this in real, it's kind of an amusing show. It's called Ridiculousness. It's on MTV. Rob Dyrdek is the host of this. He was a guy that used to work on, used to compete in X Games. He finally said, "Why am I breaking my bones when I can make money?" This guy's a multi-multi-millionaire, and all he does is pull clips of boys doing stupid stuff. You never see girls doing stupid stuff. You always see girls, girls are the camera people, and they're saying things like, "You're going to kill yourself, man," and they'll like, "Nah, I'm fine," and they'll, you know, as far as bicycles go, if they have bicycles, they'll take them on a roof, and they'll jump off the roof with their bicycle. So, I can't explain the boys. I think it's just a point that boys are going to be boys, and girls are smarter than boys. That's just one reality, but, so. I do approve, though, what you're doing with electric bicycles. You know, when you had the last meeting, you mentioned about that, Mayor, about seeing the kid run through that. I was going home on Bel Air, turning on Whiteview, lights red, kid comes zipping by. He didn't look at traffic at all. It didn't affect him at all. And here's an example, Vice Mayor. I was interviewing recently where there were two girls that got off their bike, pushed the signal, waited for it. A bike, a boy comes by and just, phew, right through. He didn't look at anything. So, self-destructive.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Chantel.
Chantel Perninger, okay, so, hold on a minute, 2025 XX, you, did you skip over it? Did you approve something? It just, I, I've still had something to say about it. And I have almost three minutes, okay?
Which ordinance is that?
This is number six.
What's the topic?
Yes, that was approved, and we did have public comment.
Okay, so there was no talk, no public comment. It was approved like that. Okay, so I still have...
Wait, wait, one correction for the record. There was a discussion. Public comment was open. No one came up to it. Public comment was closed. So, there was opportunity for public comment.
I gave the opportunity, Ms. Chantel. You just missed it. You must have been taking a nap.
I missed it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so I still have something to say, and I have only two minutes left now. How come the city transmits potable water to Marineland and Flagler County for Beverly Beach if the actual supply doesn't fully meet the demand? Is the emergency sharing with neighborhood cities on a plan of city consumption? Now, the possibility is to increase the missing water. You came up with rubbish groundwater, surface waters, treat it, concentrate, and reclaim wastewater. From where, by the word, by the way? I'm concerned also about the chemicals. I mean, most people have no idea that to treat the water, you have to add aluminum chloride, caustic soda, polyothrophosphate, sulfuric acids, ammonia sulfate, and sodium hypochlorite. Now, if you use the reclaimed water, wastewater, how much more of those chemicals would you have to put? And why can't we just say, "Those waters, they're not going to be converted into some kind of drinkable water, but we'll use them over the city for irrigation of the grass." So, to serve the people of Palm Coast instead of having them drink it. And also for Raftalis, there was no mention of it. The whole thing was approved. I looked at it, and you have nine people. And the cost per hour altogether, $2,335. I mean, did you look at that? And all that for what? To provide services for a feasibility study regarding our water and wastewater utility system in order to apply for bonds. Am I getting that straight? How much more of those?
Ms. Chantel, well, Mr. Rissell, could you set up an appointment with Ms. Chantel to, go back there to see Mr. Rissell? Ms. Chantel, go see Mr. Rissell. Raise your hand. There you go, Peter. Thank you. He'll square your way on all that, okay?
I mean, we can't keep on paying for all those studies like that, at that amount of money. We have to pay back for that.
Chantel, I'm going to respond to that when public comment's over, so.
Thank you.
Come on up, Ms. Duarte.
Jeanne Duarte, I'm going to piggyback on her. You've got a lot of piggybacking going on down here with the consent agendas, and they're all clustered.
Mr. Mayor, there was already time for this public comment. This is non-agenda items. These are non-agenda item public comment. That was during the consent, which you had your chance to, and you choose not to.
You didn't make a public comment.
Yeah, but this is a public comment.
This is non-agenda public item, so anything that is not on the agenda, that's what you're allowed to discuss.
Okay, so it's not on the agenda, so why do the people on the east side of the intercoastal not pay for the wastewater, the stormwater anyways?
Thank you, ma'am.
Stop interrupting people like that.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll just answer that one real quick. That's not true. People on the east side do pay for stormwater.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dance?
Yes, sir. Wanted to take an item off of Ms. Johnson's list to do regarding the library. The library director explained to me this, this evening that the month of, from November 1st through December 1st is going to be staff moving all of the Bonnell branch to the Nexus Center and some of the Palm Coast items and machinery. There's a, there's a transition occurring from November to December 1st. And also, the grand opening is going to be December 4th with an official opening of Sunday, December 7th. So, there's about a month period that is going to be impacted. And we didn't discuss it at the public meeting about how that transition was going to happen, but that's the explanation for that time. Is there a meeting tomorrow for the LDC? Did I read an LDC meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, here at 5:30. My comments on that, I'll bring up to that meeting tomorrow, although it conflicts with another meeting, but that's okay. One final comment, and real quick on the e-bike thing. There's a state classification system, so you mentioned changes to three. It can't happen because those are state classifications.
Mr. Dance, we'll talk about that. We, I'll talk offline with you on that one. I'll make sure it's worked out.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I figured it was a restructure, Commissioner. I knew that, I figured that was the time period they were moving around stuff. Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, the ordinance, it's a clarification, not bringing it up. The e-bike, was it passed with or without age limit? Because it got a little confused.
The age limit is 11 years old.
Okay, and then it was a matter of, the ordinance didn't have anything about schools, zones, written?
We accepted that changes.
And that's fine, okay. Just wanted to clarify that, that's all. Another item I'd like to bring up is, so it's been recently brought up, and I actually had the chance to meet with John Zobler about this. Inspectors showing up to job sites, requesting and failing an inspection that was requested by them, and then promptly rescheduling an inspection seven days later. So, this goes back to the not having recourse on these accelerated fees. But the fact that this new department is able to do that with no, and if you'll, I'm sorry if you put him on the spot like that, but there was no signs of anything that required what that inspector said had to happen on that job site, but it had to be done or else. So, I do think that we're having issues above and beyond, and that's part of the conflict we're having with these new departments, that come about with no oversight. There's not, no one can tell me why this department was even made. They were functioning under stormwater. Every process they do now, even the same people just moved over. So, no one's been able to explain to me why we did it, except for a brief explanation of, "Well, it'll be better customer service." So, I still don't understand why this whole department was made when it was already functioning. The same people moved over. We didn't change anything. We literally just said, "Oh, you are no longer here. You're here." So, this shuffling, it gets a little gray, it gets a little confusing, but we're really not solving any problems by doing it, except we're actually causing more problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Chief act like he was going to get up. I'll bring it back to the DIAS. What did you have, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I could probably answer, Mr. Amaral. That's an operational item. One that we looked at, the organization of ways that we could improve efficiency, and that was one of them. How we could improve not only the residents' experience whenever we did have infill law issues. It's not true. Not all of the staff moved over. It was a separate division in stormwater. We had some retirements in that division, so some people moved on to a happier time in their life, and we eliminated a manager position. So, some staff were retained and others moved on, but it was to improve organizational efficiency, and it was an operational item. So, we do know that there are some culture things that we're working to improve in the organization. That's not necessarily from a policy standpoint from city council, but we are aware, and we have active conversations with the Home Builders Association.
Thank you, ma'am. What did you have, Vice Mayor?
Just on that topic, you know, there should be notice, obviously, and I don't think that staff isn't giving notice of what is being asked out from our builders. So, to the extent there's a lack of communication, perhaps, of the expectations from the builders, maybe we need to improve upon that. There should certainly be clear expectations when inspections are being done.
Absolutely, and furthermore, we don't want to, if, if something is happening, I can't be everywhere. I can't be eyes and ears everywhere, right? I can't be eyes and ears everywhere, right? So if something is happening, we need to know about it. Mr. Buckley needs to know about it, Mr. Zobler needs to know about it. And not that there's going to be any type of retaliation, but just, we, we don't know what we can improve if you don't tell us. So communication is a two-way street, and we're having conversations with the builders about that.
Okay, thank you. Just really quickly, Mayor, may I have permission to address Ms. Chantel's question about the consent? So the first contract on the consent agenda, I had questions about it, too. And Acting City Manager gave me a good explanation as to why that's required. Would you mind sharing that? The water rate study?
Sure. Our bond council, we worked with our bond council for the new utility bond, that it was approved through the rates, but now the next step is to actually go acquire the bond. And bonds to go out to market require a financial feasibility study, and so as part of that process, we are doing this study.
So it, it's actually required? We have to do?
Yes, because of the magnitude of our capital plan, because it's a new bond, yes, we are required to do this study.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, of the, in response to public comment.
Public comments. Anybody else have anything for public comment? All right, we'll move on to discussion matters not on the agenda, but a council. Anyone? Councilman Gambaro, you got something?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I just have to say, horns down. Go Gators. I have to make sure I celebrate it because we may not get another win this season, but, but...
You still got Florida State.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to get in front of that. We'll find, we'll find out Thanksgiving time.
We're all garbage.
That Navy's 5-0.
Oh, that's great.
Ooh, there we go. Did you have anything else?
You got anything serious?
It is serious talk.
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, my sincerest condolences to Mr. and Mrs. Salinas and their family. I know everybody here is keeping them in their prayers. Also, just want to let our counterparts know at the county, anything that we can do as far as support. You know, obviously, we're here, we're all feeling this loss. Jorge was an awesome person. He really was. He always had a smile on his face. He was always so very gracious, very saddened to see that he is no longer with us, and just really want to extend prayers and condolences to his family and friends that are surely going to be mourning his loss. Another call to, please, please, please be careful out there on the roads. I said at the last meeting, I'll say it again, please, you all, please think about yourselves and your neighbors. It's so incredibly important that we realize the magnitude of what we're doing when we're just driving. So please be careful out on the roads. On a more positive note, I want to again put out there that Kiwanis is having their charity bowling tournament this Saturday. You can still sign up. It'll be a lot of fun. If you want to sign up, you have to be at the Bowling Alley at noon. The actual tournament starts at 1:00. We will have a city team, the county will have a team, and school board is working on it, so hopefully they'll have a team as well. And then the last thing, Mayor, I did go to the Hook and Veterans event this weekend at Club 51 in Palm Coast. We had a local comedian, Christie B., there, and some other comedians as well. They did a fantastic show for the charity organization Hook and Veterans. If you have not heard of it, please look it up. It is a great nonprofit in our community that raises money for veterans, particularly those who are suffering from injuries, whether they be visible or invisible, PTSD and things of that nature. It's really important that we continue to keep, especially in our community with such a high veteran population, we continue to keep them in our thoughts and, and at the forefront of outreach. I don't, I don't think there's ever enough veteran services, to be quite frank. So I was very honored to be there, but definitely look that organization up because many of those guys are right here, local in our community. So really great event, and thank you to everybody who contributed to that.
Thank you. Councilman Sullivan?
Just, I, I just wanted to again reiterate the condolences to Jorge Salinas and his wife, Nancy, and what happened to them is just horrible. There's not a whole lot I can say. You've said, said everything, and just hope we follow up and make sure that we attend services and things like that. So we'll, we'll keep everybody informed on that.
Yes, sir, thank you. The only thing I have is, I spoke about this a little bit today with, with John. I think that we need to start leaning forward, because it's next year. If they put, if they put removing property taxes on the ballot, people are going to vote for it. So I think we need to start looking at courses of actions, courses of action, if that comes to fruition after the next election. So City Manager, and if I can get consent from the council, I think we need to start looking at, because we may have to, if it comes down to it, making up 67 million dollars is quite a hurdle. So we need to start looking at what we're, what moves we'd have to make to probably restructure our city in the event that this happens, and other funding mechanisms that may be a possibility. So I think we need to start looking at that, because we don't know what's going to happen in this next legislative session. So just start looking and start thinking about it, if nothing else. All the department heads, you know, and you, City Manager, because that's going to be, that's going to be it for Avalorum.
I, my only struggle with this is it's kind of a moving target right now, because we don't know what they're going to do. And obviously, you know, removing property tax as a homeowner, that sounds great. It funds all of our local services, so then I don't know how they put it on the ballot without some alternative funding in some way, like sales tax or something. So it's hard to plan for something we don't know what they're going to do with yet. I agree that it should be fairly popular in terms of an amendment that would, that would go out there.
I, I agree. And it was one thing, at the chamber meeting we were at a couple of weeks ago, the only legislation that they've developed so far to replace the taxes, and apparently there's already a piece of legislation moving forward, is the way they would handle it, double the sales tax and charge 20% fee for any real estate transaction in the state. That's, that's how significant trying to do this would be. It's not, I don't think it's going to pass, but that's, that's the current legislative action.
But when, when, I think when I came in, and one of the questions I had is, who's essential? Who is essential for the function of our, our community and our city? So we need to start looking at that and what steps we would have to take if it comes to fruition. Nothing, nothing major needs to be done now, but we need to start thinking about it. As a council, as leaders within the city, you're going to have to think about that, because I've been through a lot of budget cutbacks in the military, and I've been, I've been in organizations where you have a first sergeant and a commander turning wrenches into motor pool, because all of the soldiers are out trying to get their expert infantry badges. And you're trying to get ready for mission cycle, to be ready to deploy anywhere in the world in 18 hours or less. So we have to start, as leaders, we need to start looking at that. That's just, put something in your head to think about. That's all I had. Lawyer, you got any lawyer stuff?
Yes, sir.
City Manager?
Yes, just a few updates. Just as a reminder, Mayor and City Council's Columbus Day is on Monday, October 13th. The in-city offices are closed. I wanted to seek your consensus to modify the council calendar for the holidays. 11:11 is Veterans Day. We already have it tentatively canceled on your workshop agenda. I believe most of us will be walking in, or walking or riding in the parade in Benel on, on that day. And then also, 11:25 is a scheduled workshop, but it is also Thanksgiving week, and 12:23 is a workshop and also Christmas week.